All right, well, good afternoon. And it's, we are here in person and this is something that doesn't happen very often. So thank you all for being here today and to my colleagues. It's great to see you. Today is the special board meeting. We have a special session. We will have our regular board meeting which will start at 6:00 PM this evening. Our first matter on our agenda as always is the call to order. My name is Patrice Horstman. I'm the Chair of the Coquigny County Board of Supervisors and also the supervisor for District One. District Two?
Good afternoon, everybody. Eroni Mavasquez, Supervisor, District Two and current Vice Chair.
District Three.
Hello, everybody. I'm Ryan from District Three. Which he so often calls the best district in Coquigny County. I'm so happy to be back with my peers here.
Which he so often calls the best district in Coquigny County. District Four?
Good afternoon, everyone. Julie B. Gate, District Four Supervisor. And welcome, everyone here and also that are on the Zoom meeting virtually. Thank you.
Thank you. And District Five is not here with us today. She is on travel for county business. So she will not be able to join us this evening. And second is, in honor of our country, the Pledge of Allegiance. For those that can, let's please stand and face, oh, the flag, which I guess is behind us, and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which one nation, under God, is the greatest.
All right, thank you so much. And our next item is a possible executive session to obtain legal counsel on letters received regarding election records and election-related information requests. Members of the board, pursuant to the Arizona revised statutes, we can elect to go into executive session at any time on a matter on our agenda for advice from legal counsel. This is specifically set forth. And I am going to ask our county manager and our legal counsel, are you recommending that the board go into executive session?
Good afternoon, Chairman Fowler, members of the board. This is Monique Cody from the county attorney's office. It would be at the discretion of the board, but consistent with open meeting law, it would require a board member to move to go into executive session for this item. And a second, we're prepared if the board members so desire an executive session.
Thank you, legal counsel. It's also Horstman. Fowler, but that's okay. She's not with us. So she won't take advance, nor would I. Members of the board, we have a recommendation from legal counsel that we should go into executive session pursuant to the Arizona Open Meeting Law. Do I have a motion to go into executive session for advice from legal counsel? There is a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second to go into executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have a unanimous vote. We will go into executive session. And at this time, I understand that we will leave and go upstairs to the Grand Canyon Room. Is that correct? Or how are we going to do this? All right, members of the board, at this time then, let's go ahead and place this unmute. Members of the public, we are going to executive session. It should not be a very long executive session, I don't think. And we will be back in open meeting here very soon. So thank you all. All right, members of the board, at this time then, let's go ahead and place this
We adjourned our executive session. Members of the public, we are back in open meeting. And our next item is presentation and discussion regarding the County Supervisors Association's activities for 2021 and 2022, presented by the County Supervisors Association Executive Director Craig Sullivan. And with him as an added treat for us is Mojave Supervisor Jean Bishop. And thank you both for coming and traveling up here. And Madam President, I should say, Jean Bishop. So it is just wonderful to have you both here. And thank you for joining us in open meeting.
Good morning.
Good morning Supervisor President.
Honorable members of the board, it is such an honor to be here in Coconino County with you all this afternoon. It's so beautiful up here. In Mojave County, we're green for the first time in many, many years. But up here, you have the greens and the yellow flowers and the smells. And it's just really a pleasure to be up here enjoying God's country. So for those of you that don't know me, my name is Jean Bishop. I'm Mojave County Supervisor in District Four. I also have the honor of being your CSA President for this year. Thank you. I'm sorry. Look at all this technology.
We're very fancy up here.
So what else do you have in store? I've come to you live on video and color. I'm again just honored to be here with you today. I wanted to be here to thank you for your involvement in CSA and your partnership with CSA. It's very, it makes it very effective cooperation so that we can all get together and voice our opinions and ideas to the association. It's truly our pleasure to work with Coconino County and support all of your ideas as well. So I wanted to thank you for your outstanding involvement and leadership with our association. In particular, I wanted to thank Supervisor Horseman for representing CSA at the Western Interstate Board of Directors. You've been doing a wonderful job. Thank you. Also, I wanted to recognize Supervisor Ryan. Thank you for your leadership at CSA's Medium County Caucus and your prior service as CSA President.
Thank you.
I now know what that means. And Supervisor Fowler, I wanted to congratulate you on your appointment to the Board of Directors on the National Association of Counties. That's going to be challenging for you, and we appreciate your involvement. So as you know, Craig.
And Supervisor, President Bishop, I should say Supervisor Fowler isn't with us this evening. She's in, I guess, an economics workshop down in Florida. So she's representing us down there this evening. So.
I'm sure she'll be watching the video.
Oh, I hope so. But I don't think she's, we were hopeful, but I haven't seen her on yet.
Okay, okay. Well.
But we are going to let her know everything you've said about her.
That's right. It'll be in the minutes. So as you know, Craig and I are here to brief you on what CSA has worked on this past year. But before I turn it over to Craig, I wanted to take a point of privilege to remind you that the 2020 CSA Policy Summit, it's being hosted this year by Pima and Santa Cruz Counties. And I hope you all are making plans to attend this year and participate. The dates are October 5th through the 7th down in Tucson. So CSA's, this is CSA's most important meeting of the year. And that's where all of us supervisors get together and we discuss policy issues that will be important for the coming year. So I'm sure that you've already developed some policies for us to take a look at in Tucson. And I'm looking forward to seeing you all there. So with that, with your permission, Madam Chairman, I'd like to turn this meeting over to Craig so he can brief you on the happenings for CSA for this past year.
Thank you, President Bishop. And you know, the other thing they did is the WIR Business Meeting in Ontario, Oregon, is at the very same time as the CSA meeting down in Tucson. So I know that four members of our board will be there. I will not because I'll be at the WIR meeting. So I'm going to miss it unfortunately. But we do have four members that are going down for that.
Well, we'll miss you.
And I'll miss seeing you down there too, so.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman and members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here with you today. For the record, I'm Craig Sullivan, and I will speak up a little bit with the County Supervisors Association. Thank you. And I'll make sure that I get into the record here. But as President Bishop suggested, I just wanted to be here as well to thank you for your involvement in our association. I am so grateful for all of the engagement that this county provides in our association. Your leadership and participation with your colleagues really helps us become an effective organization. And I want to thank you for that. And similarly, Mr. Peru, your staff is phenomenal. And we rely heavily on outstanding professional staff. With your leadership, we're very grateful for that partnership as well. I do have a few materials with you. You have the PowerPoint slides, and we'll go through some of those. And I also provided to you our annual report from the last fiscal year, which is a document that you're able to review at your leisure. And the basic theme is it is critical for me to stand before you to talk about how we have been working to support Coconino County and be accountable for what we're engaged in and have your influence in where we go forward. And so I want to make sure that you have all the information you need to continue your leadership in our organization. The PowerPoint itself is broken down into a couple of parts. I'd like to first just talk a little bit about who we are as an organization. And then we'll talk about some of the specific activities. But first, as you know, and this is for folks who are watching, the County Supervisors Association is a partnership of the 15 counties. We focus on creating a forum for supervisors and professional staff to talk about issues that impact local governance. We develop research to inform decision-making at the state and local level. And we serve as an intergovernmental office. And that's really key because the entities that counties have to involve themselves with are significant. You can see them on the slide there where there are external partners, state legislature, courts, federal government, and others that we all have to engage with together. And I'm sorry, Lindsay, is the PowerPoint displaying?
It's not.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you, Lindsay. Yeah, so the intergovernmental function is a core function of the association. And it is something that we really enjoy doing on your behalf. Our leadership are all 61 supervisors in the state. And we are very grateful for the engagement of everybody in that regard. We do rely heavily on key leaders to serve with the national associations like Chairwoman in WIR and on our Legislative Policy Committee. And I want to thank you, Mr. Ryan, for your ongoing involvement in our LBC. And you as well, Madam Chairman, for staying plugged into that. It's critical to help us through the legislative session as we seek to represent your interests. I mentioned that we serve as a forum for the counties. And I wanted to highlight this. This gives you a list of the key elected leaders and agency heads that we had come through our association last year to dialogue with you and your colleagues. You can see in the middle some of the key roundtable topics that we were all involved in. And they won't surprise you. There are issues that every county is dealing with, ranging from things like affordable housing in short term, rental issues to court funding, broadband deployment, and employee compensation. So issues that are really common across all of the counties. And I wanted to highlight too, on the right, the affiliate organizations that we partner with. These are the professional staff organizations that work with us to build out a strong network to support you as well. The managers and administrators meet with me regularly. We have the pleasure of briefing and engaging with finance directors, the planners, the engineers, and on and on. That's very important to forging our partnership. I also wanted to mention the data collection function because this is an ongoing strategic initiative at the association where we seek to build more and more data points that we can use to provide visualizations and other information to inform decision-making. Vanessa Fielder on our team manages this function, and it's growing annually. And we've been very proud of how that's developed. You can go onto our website and access data. It will give you comps across 15 counties, things like tax rate data points. You can look at real-time revenue changes within your county and other counties, monitor expenditure limits, and items like cost drivers in the healthcare system, pension health, and things like that. So as we get feedback from you on where we can build out analysis and information, we operationalize it in this data collection function. Now, Madam Chairman, if I may, I'm going to shift gears a little bit and talk about the legislative piece. So the legislature obviously went late this last session, which means that bills, new bills, are not effective until September 24th. So that's coming up, but it's later than typical. We submitted and distributed a document of every bill that impacts county operations by policy area. And that's been distributed widely. And we are available to help support the local implementation of those laws. And I know folks are working diligently on that as we try to operationalize all of those new bills. The legislative context is worth taking note of. Last year, we knew going in what that legislative environment would look like. They had a lot of money. They had a lot of major priorities at the state that included transportation infrastructure, debt repayment, water investment, education, and tax policy. What was really critical to how the whole case occurred were the legislative majorities. There were very slim legislative majorities. And by the nature of the legislature, they like to do the budget and the major policy items within the majority caucus. Because of those slim majorities, though, they were not able to get accord within the caucus. And that led to a broader conversation, particularly as it relates to the budget, with both parties being at the table to get a final product. And that brought a lot of good things into play. This slide shows you what the state budget looks like. And there are a couple of things that I want to share with you. Number one is the state has eliminated its final vestige of a property tax. So it no longer has the state equalization property tax rate. It is now solely dependent on sales taxes, income taxes, and a small amount on corporate income. Also, with the state budget, they did spend virtually everything they had that was on the table. So they put about $5.4 billion in one-time expenses. They added as well $1.6 billion in ongoing spending. And if you look at the ending balance line item here going out into fiscal year 2025, you can see that they're projecting an ending balance of about $26 million. On a $15.8 billion budget, that's a de minimis amount. And small swings in the economy can impact the state's financial trajectory. And that's typically of concern to the counties because we're downhill in state policymaking. But it is important to note that the legislature has built a $1.4 billion rainy day fund. And that's something they did not have when they went into the last recession. And so I think they have been managing that very wisely coming out of this session. This shows you, Madam Chairman and members, where they spent the money. It won't surprise you that the resources went to education, health, and welfare. Debt reduction was a major item, public safety, water investments, and transportation. And that revenue reduction piece, again, is the reduction in the property tax rate that they put in play. The transportation spend this year was in multiple counties across the state. There were some resources that were allocated to Coconino County. Very importantly, there's a grant program that ADOT has been funded to implement, $50 million smart grant program. That's to help rural counties with technical assistance and matching dollar support for federal infrastructure projects. So that's on the table. Now, I know, sitting in front of Mr. Ryan and his role in RTAC, that that is not a lot of money. But it is something, but there's a need for additional resources from the state to help us all leverage these federal resources for transportation. And I'm sure that's going to be a conversation at RTAC. What didn't happen was the rural transportation package was not included. And I know you know that well here in Coconino County. But I did want to flag that as kind of an opportunity lost, but hopefully something that will be addressed going forward. This shows some of the priority items that we were trying to wedge into the budget. There are a few things that I'd like to highlight. We did secure an ongoing grant program to support juvenile dependency representation. And we did secure the flexibility language, which is something I know Coconino County has used very efficiently. What we didn't do, though, was solve the probation issue. The probation officers are very important employees in the region. And there has been a dispute between the state and others about how they are going to resource this function. And so we're trying to arrive at a sustainable plan for the state to properly fund probation. They did not accept our recommendations this year. So we're going to have to keep that conversation going. And we have been in dialogue with the court system about what that next step is. And we briefed the managers a little bit on that Friday. And we'll share more on that with our board meetings going forward. There were some key cost drivers that were put in the process. And I want to highlight those because these are important. These are not, these are credible policy items, but it shows you how state decisions impact your budget. What you see first is the increase in the long-term care contribution coming out of Coconino County, close to $600,000. And if you look at the lower graph, the copper line, you can see that for several years, those contributions were flat. And now they're starting to increase significantly. This is something that we've been concerned about because of the aging of the population and the need within the provider community for more resources. So the state did make a lot of financial adjustments in this space, and it's putting a lot of pressure on the local property tax. The state also increased Superior Court judge salaries, which was a need that they had been evaluating for some time. But that has county costs too. And I wanted to identify as well that we and the cities and the COGS were tapped to cost share in a new update to the ADOR tax system. And so that's another item that the counties did end up paying for. This slide shows you some buckets of other funding where the state put monies to the counties in areas that they want, that they prioritize. And so what you see here is the Sheriff Deputy Stipend that was funded at $53 million. This is something that we're now working on implementation with the Sheriff's Association. That was deter, or there is a concern that that will be a pensionable allocation to the sheriff's deputies, which will impact your general fund. We're trying to work with PSPRS and the governor's office to ensure that that's not pensionable. So that's an ongoing exposure point that we're working on and have been throughout the summer. The legislature also funded $10 million to Rural County Attorney Diversion Program grants. And I know your county was involved in securing that. And they put in place a $10 million grant program for cybersecurity grants that all of the counties are welcome to avail themselves of. And we encourage you to do that. You can also see the other items they put in on border-related issues as well as election-related appropriations that they put in place. Now, I wanted to shift gears a little bit away from the budget and talk a little bit about bills. And I'll do that in two parts. One, some bills that we took to the Capitol. We had five bills introduced that were approved by our board. Four were actionable. And you can see that, or I'm sorry, five were introduced, four actually got to the governor's desk. And you can see the four that did get up there. And your county helped us navigate the technical issues with House Bill 2197, the medical examiner issue. And I'd like to thank you for that. I'd like to thank you for that. This slide opens just a general conversation about the hundreds of bills that Petch County operates. And this, Mr. Ryan, is where we spend our time at the LPC. And I wanted to highlight this because Robin Hilliard on our staff, Jacob Emnet, and of course Vanessa and Brandon, spent a lot of time triaging all of the bills that are in the process. Your technical staff helps us analyze them in our LPC case positions, and then we deploy to try to represent your interest. But just given our nature as county governments, there are a lot of touchpoints in the state but, state statutes, as you know. These are the policy areas that were particularly relevant, and our team participated at stakeholder meetings and if bills were moving, that they actually got involved in specific bills, and they won't surprise you either. Elections was a top priority of the legislature to have a dialogue about. There were 140 bills in the process that affected elections. As you know, elections is done a little bit differently in each county. The election officials, the recorders, the boards, and of course, the election directors all have a role. I want to extend my appreciation to our friends at ACO who did an outstanding job working with all of us on these issues last year and running point on a lot of them, and Robin Hilliard on our team was very close to that. But I thought they did a very effective job at getting the message out, and I share that because I think next year, we're going to see similar conversation about election-related matters. And as you know, our lens is not partisan when we look at these, it's operational. It's about meeting the needs of constituents in an effective way, making sure folks are able to vote and that it's easy for folks to do so. So that's the lens that we use. The emergency response was another major point of conversation again. Madam Chair, most of these bills were bills we saw a year ago, but they were caught up in a, in the budget that got, bill that got declared unconstitutional. So they brought them all back. But these are things that affect the governor's emergency powers going forward, the board's emergency powers going forward, and of course, deal with immunizations, masks, and vaccines. I wanted to show these as well. This shows some of the diverse bills that we worked on this year, and there are a few I'll quickly highlight. There were some modifications to the permissible hours for using fireworks, which those of us who have dogs will appreciate that that could be shut down a little bit earlier. For those counties that are interested in the conversation about the off-highway vehicle issue, which we talked about at our summit last year, that item migrated into a study committee. I talked to Senator Kerr this morning, and she will be getting that study committee going in October, and will want to participate in that. Water, major conversation, you all know it well, you're at the table on that issue. Big-ticket item was the billion dollars into the Water Infrastructure Financing Authority. They're taking nominations now to serve on that board, and we'll monitor that going forward as well. And we worked with the league on the short-term rental regulation enhancement as well as some changes in residential zone, trailers. The last policy slide, a couple of things that I'd like to share with you. So I mentioned again that they've gotten rid of the state property tax. And why that's, well, it's good in the sense that there's a reduction of 41 cents, but it also means that the state's not really sensitive to changes in the property tax base, right? It doesn't really impact their revenues anymore, and it never really did because it was always very small. It does impact yours, and I know you know that. So there were policy changes this year where they have completed the plan to transition commercial assessment ratios from 25% down to 15. What that does is that, and that'll phase in by 2027. What that does is it changes the relative mix of your property tax base to shift more to the homeowner's side. All right, that's what it does as a practical matter. The legislature also accelerated depreciation of locally assessed business personal property, which again, takes taxable asset off and creates a little bit more pressure on your property tax. And we're very sensitive to that, and I'm saying this more for folks who may not be aware, you know, you know well, because those state cost drivers that you're mandated to pay for primarily paid for by the property tax. And on the right, I flagged the pension piece. You all were an early mover in getting a handle on the pension problem and came up with creative ways to get money into the system to benefit from the time value of money. And that was a very wise thing for you all to go at. Over the last few years, the rest of the counties have come down that way. And so we have seen remarkable changes in the funded status of our pension contributions, our pension funds. What that also means, though, is that other interests look at the system and say, well, perhaps we should be looking at enhancing benefits. And so we are seeing more and more of that conversation occurring, and we are trying to make sure that counties are at the table to make sure that any changes are informed by credible public policy and are funded in some way. And so Brandon Nie on our team and Vanessa Fielder support me in making sure that we're present on these issues and also that we're evaluating the conversation at the PSPRS Board of Trustees, trying to support you and to protect the commitments and the good progress that you've made over the last several years. So that's how, that's the lens we're applying on bills that come into the process. There was a new tool brought onto the table, and I know you know about this, and that is a tool that will allow for pre-funding of ASRS unfunded liability. And so that's something that we did support in the process, and I think it can be another additional tool as we go down on this path. Last slide for you on items. These are all the issues that are going to go to the ballot, and I don't know that a whole lot of folks have really paid attention to what's going on to the ballot yet, so I just wanted to flag them for you. But there are policies that the legislature referred related to voter identification on mail-in ballots, a question about lieutenant governor, as well as a tax increment, an increase to fund fire districts across the state. So that will be on the ballot. And then my final slide is to just, again, encourage all of you to participate in our policy development process. I'm grateful that you have submitted some policy items for deliberation. Forward to evaluating them and talking about them as we have our summit. And Madam Chairwoman, I was well aware that WIR did us all a disservice by scheduling, but that's an occupational hazard, and we need to be in both places. So we will deploy you to WIR, and the rest of the team will take care of ourselves.
They will.
So with that, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I know it took a lot of your time, but I'd be happy to schedule your questions.
Thank you, and I'm going to turn this to my other supervisors here and see if they have questions or comments, and I have a few that I'll make at the end. So Supervisor Ryan.
There we go. I gotta fix mine to my two closer. I hope that works. Been a while since we've been live. You guys get to get us first in our meeting. So it's really good to, as always, work with you, Craig, work with Jean, and our fellow supervisors out there. You know, actually, I'm looking forward to the summit. Most of us will be going there. Patrice has our back at WIR, all of our backs, huh? So that's good. Just to note, I'm no longer RTAC. Ronimo is on RTAC these days, and so, yeah. So the rural transportation piece, it's always an element that we look at. I'm curious on just your quickest thought on the hot items that we're going to have, and then a little bit about your thoughts on the play on leadership right now, which, you know, obviously, we have to go through an election, but they're going to have to act on it pretty quick, too, so.
And so just to make sure, Madam Chair, you asked about like what hot issues might be out there and what leadership might look like.
Yeah.
You know, it's an excellent question, and I will share with you that it's a little bit difficult to get a real bead on what will be particularly top of mind going into the next session. So we are looking at candidates, seeing what they're campaigning on, looking at the gubernatorial platforms, and we are seeing, you know, common themes. We're seeing conversations about election issues, some of the same issues we've seen in the past. Homelessness and affordable housing has definitely elevated across the state for good reasons. So we are seeing a lot of conversation there, and I know the work group, legislative work group was here maybe last week, and so we anticipate that we'll see some action there. We do expect that a lot of bills that we dealt with last year that didn't pass, things like removing the board's authority as it relates to requiring land surveys, probably will become back some of those technical items that we had concerns with. And so we'll continue to put those feelers out as we go into the next session. Revenues are coming indecently right now, and we monitor those each month. And so I would envision that, to the extent that there is one-time money again on the table, that the conversation will gravitate to infrastructure because that's always a good place to put one-time money, and that's something we'll want to monitor as it evolves. And I think there'll also be conversations, depending on who's in the governor's chair, about whether they want to cut taxes and what those look like. In terms of leadership, you know, it's very difficult to get a sense on how the key state positions are, and so I really don't have any key insight into that at the moment. We do know that in leadership in the House and Senate, there's significant changes, right, with Aaron Fan leaving the presidency. And right now, Senator Peterson from Mesa, Senator Gowen from Cochise County, and Senator Mezner from the Chandler area are all jockeying for the presidency of the Senate, and they'll have different cultures depending on who gets in there and what that mix looks like. It's really hard to tell who has the votes. I think the election reshuffled the deck a little bit, the primary, and so they're working through that. In the House, Representative Toma, who we worked with on the Wayfair issue, he collaborated with us on Wayfair taxation, is seeking the House speakership as well as Representative Chapwick, who's from Scottsdale, who's relatively new, but he's been seeking it as well. And for our standpoint, so there's a lot of uncertainty there, I guess is my point, and what our job will be this session, as much as any, is re-establishing those connections, relationships, and sitting down and just making sure those lines of communication are right.
I'm pretty much along that line. Same with us, with the redistricting, now we have three sets of representatives and senators, and so we too have to do our fair share and working in that way. And we do have, you know, we're not ready to put our stuff forward, but you get a general idea of what we're looking at for the future in terms of the summit, and we still have to discuss it amongst us, but it's going to be a good summit, so I'm looking forward to it. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Vice Chair.
Thank you for the presentation, and yes, I am on RTAC, and I'll be going tomorrow to the RTAC conference, statewide conference. I look forward to advocating for highway improvements as we've been impacted from the flooding. But thank you for your presentation very clearly.
It's my pleasure. I look forward to supporting you in that capacity. Thank you.
And Supervisor, would you like to say a few things?
Yes, yes. Okay, thank you for being here, Mr. Sullivan as executive director, and then also Jean as a CSA president. And then I want to thank all the executive and legislative committees out there under CSA that have really, really gone out to really talk about or taking on the responsibilities of important issues that need, that affect our constituents as a whole, and I'm so thankful to each and every one of you. And thank you for the presentation and the days that you provided to us here today. Thank you very much.
Is it safe? All right, well, and again, thank you both for being here today. And as, you know, this is my first term on Board of Supervisors, and I can't tell you how important CSA has meant, you know, to me in terms of learning my role and quite frankly, you know, really having advocates for our counties down there in with CSA and having wonderful veterans and mentors that I can look to and can call for assistance has been really very, very meaningful and very important. So CSA is not only for education and training and the advocacy you do on behalf of counties, but you're exactly right, the camaraderie and the leadership that CSA brings to us here, and we can avail ourselves to. And you can tell, Coconino County is a very active county, and we have a lot of active members here, and we are so pleased to be part of CSA and to your leadership, President Bishop, and also Craig, for all the work you do, really appreciate it very much.
And Madam Chair, if I could comment also?
Absolutely.
So, yes, and so a couple of the items that Craig brought up about the pre-funding. So earlier this year, the Board of Supervisors did take the strategic move to pre-fund our public safety retirement system unfunded liability. So that is, of course, creates a better position for our long-term strategic plan. Then this week, in fact, tonight at this evening's meeting, the board will be approving the necessary resolution so that we can proceed with Arizona State Retirement System pre-funding. And so those two items, and so we're looking closely at the market all day long, and so, but those two items are going to be important. Also want to just acknowledge that government relations, Andy Bertelson is going to be partnering with Gregory Nelson to be leading our government relations function, and so, so to Andy and Hi, Gregory. They'll be, they'll be tag teaming to provide the support and the direction for that function. And then finally, the other item with regard to the public, excuse me, the probation salary issue. We did have a meeting yesterday with the directors of adult and juvenile probation and court to discuss the issue and to get their input on the item to see as it pertains to our local situation here with our probation on the adult probation side. So again, a very collaborative conversation we had with the staff yesterday. And then finally, just really want to appreciate CSA, particularly as it relates to pulling the managers together, and that's very helpful. And so, you know, certainly with our work with excellent managers such as Mr. Elters and Mohave, he's an awesome county manager, as well as all the managers and administrators statewide to pull us all together. It's no easy feat to get everyone together, but it really is important that all the managers who, that are staffed to you all are, have the opportunity to meet and compare and to strategize as a group. So thank you, Craig, and Supervisor Bishop, and everyone, thank you.
Any other closing comments? Otherwise, thank you, and I know you've probably got a long drive back down the mountain and over across the mountain, and so thank you so much for being with us today. Really appreciate it.
Madam Chair, if we could get a photo of everyone?
That would be fabulous. I would.
Madam Chair, that could...
That's our indication to start. So, good evening, everyone. It's great to be here in person. And it's great to see that we have members in the audience. And thank you for joining us here this evening. And my name is Patrice Horstman. And I am the Chair of the Coconino County Board of Supervisors and also Supervisor for District One. It's six o'clock, and we are here for our regular session. We did have an earlier special session this afternoon. So it's good to be back. It's great to see my colleagues here back with us. And we're going to our first order of business is roll call. So at this point, I'm going to ask for District Two.
Good evening, everyone. Heronimo Vasquez, Supervisor, District Two, current Vice Chair.
District Three. And District Four.
Hello, everyone. District Four Supervisor Judy Begay.
Very good. District Five is Lena Fowler. And unfortunately, Lena is traveling and therefore won't be with us. She's traveling for county business. So we'll miss her with us. But we have four. We have a quorum. And with that, let us proceed. And our first order, next order of business is Pledge of Allegiance on behalf of our country. So if you can, please stand and face the flag. All right. And since this is our regular session, the next order of business is called to the public. So we hope we do have members of the public here. This is a hybrid meeting. So besides being here in person, we do have folks at home or on the Internet that have joined. Now it's back on. We'll see how long it works. It was blinking the touchscreen. So we'll see what happens here. So, Members of the Public and those who are here today, this is the call to the public. What this means is now is the time for you, Members of the Public, to be able to address the governing board on matters that are not on the agenda. If you would like to speak to a matter, you are here. You can just identify that you'd like to speak. And we will give you the podium to address the board. For those that are here on the Internet, I'm going to turn this over to our Clerk, Lindsay Daly, and have her explain how you can join us virtually as well. So at this point, Lindsay, can you explain how you can join us?
Thank you, Chair Horstman. If you have joined the meeting virtually, you can raise your hand and notify us that you would like to speak by hitting the Raise Hand icon that looks like a hand at the bottom of your screen if you hover towards the bottom. If you're on the telephone, you can hit star nine, and that will also raise your hand and notify us you'd like to speak.
Thank you. And so, Members of the Public, now is the time. And what we do ask is to remember you have three minutes for the call to the public. And of course, this is a public meeting. So we ask you to be respectful in comments that you might elect to make or the manner in which you elect to make those comments. So at this time, Members of the Public or anybody here would like to speak, please go ahead and raise your hand so we can identify that. Or if you're here virtually, please follow the directions of our recorder. I'm sorry, of Lindsay Daly, our Clerk.
And at this time, we have no hands raised in Zoom?
Thank you. And we don't have any raised here in our meeting. So, Members of the Public, this is it. Last call, second chance. If you'd like to address the governing board, now is your time.
Still no hands raised.
All right. Members of the public, we are then moving forward. And our next item of business is the proclamation. This is consideration and possible action to approve a proclamation declaring September 15 through October 15, 2022, as Hispanic Heritage Month here in Coconino County. And with us this evening, virtually, I see her, is Human Resources Director Erica Philpot, who will introduce this item. So at this point, with your permission, County Manager, I'm going to turn this over to Erica.
Thank you, Chair Horstman, Members of the Board. Very pleased to be with you this evening. It is my pleasure to bring forward this proclamation for your review and consideration. And also very excited to have with us Danny Donaldson and Frank Moraga to read the proclamation. Following the proclamation, I'd like to share some of the events that the Diversity Committee has planned for Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15 through October 15.
Very good. Thank you, Erica. And we look forward to the reading of the proclamation.
Perfect. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Erica, for the introduction. The Coconino County Proclamation designating September 15 through October 15, 2022, as Hispanic Heritage Month, whereas Coconino County observes National Hispanic Heritage Month, recognizing the rich history, culture, and contributions of individuals who identify as Hispanic or Latino, including those whose ancestors were indigenous to North America, as well as those who came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central America, and South America. And...
Whereas the United States Hispanic population reached 62.1 million in 2020, an increase of 23% over the previous decade. And in Coconino County, nearly 15% of residents identify as Hispanic or Latino. And...
Whereas Coconino County understands that September 15 is significant because it is the anniversary of independence for Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their Independence Days on September 16 and 18, respectively. And...
Whereas many Hispanic pioneers worked in the sawmill and the railroad industry as integral community members, helping establish our mountain town of Flagstaff and the continued development of Coconino County. And...
Whereas Hispanics and Latinos have enhanced and shaped our national character with centuries-old traditions while adding their own distinct and dynamic perspectives to the story of our country. And...
Whereas Coconino County honors the contributions of Hispanic and Latino entrepreneurs, educators, activists, artists, engineers, scientists, and public servants who cultivate communities and impact rich traditions. And...
Whereas the Hispanic Heritage Observance began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15 and ending on October 15. In 1988, Congress established National Hispanic Heritage Month.
Whereas Coconino County and the Board of Supervisors recognize cultural diversity as a core value of our organization, encouraging communities in Coconino County to focus on equity, social justice, and actions that move our communities forward.
Now, therefore, we do hereby designate September 15, 2022, through October 15, 2022, as Hispanic Heritage Month to celebrate and honor Hispanic heritage and culture, thereby strengthening us as a county, state, and nation forever.
Thank you very much for the reading of the proclamation. It's certainly a very important proclamation. As you've already pointed out, there is a deep and rich history here in Coconino County for Hispanic and Latino/Latina cultures and people who have definitely been the very founders here of Coconino County, after the indigenous founders here in Coconino County. So with that, I'd like to turn this over to the Members of the Board to make some comments. Vice Chair.
Thank you. First off, I'd like to say thank you to CHOC for your continued advocacy for the Hispanic/Latino community in Coconino County and all the hard work that you do in terms of the events, the education, and now helping sponsor these events that are coming up during this month. Really pleased that Coconino County has taken the time to put together these celebrations for this month, you know, as we look at diversity and inclusion, equity and inclusion in our county. Part of that is recognizing the contributions of different communities in Coconino County. And this month happens to be for Hispanic/Latino heritage. So I look forward to hearing stories about how Hispanic/Latino first residents and longtime family members, generational family members in this community, hearing some of their stories that sometimes get missed in the history books. And so, you know, the Hispanic and Latino communities were sheepherders, were loggers, and were here since the founding of Flagstaff. Yet sometimes you don't see some of those stories in the history books. And so, these are opportunities to share those stories and show the different diversity that our county has and paint a more complete picture of what our history is. So again, thank you. And I really encourage everybody who can attend some of these events, please do. Thank you.
And I forgot to turn this back over to Erica to talk about those events. And so, before I turn it over to the other Members of the Board here, I'd like, Erica, let us know about the events. We don't want to miss them. These are important for our community.
Thank you, Chair Horstman. We have many great events coming up to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. And Danny Donaldson is going to be with us next week on the 19th, doing a Lunch and Learn on CHOC and all that they contribute to our community. So very thankful for the gift of her time. This week, we are kicking it off on Thursday, which is September 15. And Felice Weems and Juanita Hernandez are going to do a cooking demonstration in the mess hall at Fort Todd Hill. That will also be a little bit of a hybrid presentation. It'll also be online for people who would like to watch online. But for those who are going to be able to be in person, they'll be able to enjoy the cooking demonstration to its fullest extent. Also, on Friday of this week, Esliar Musta is going to do a Lunch and Learn on travels to Colombia and Panama. So that's this week. And then beyond this week, next week, next Wednesday, the 21st, we're bringing our salsa contest back. It's been several years since we've been able to have our salsa contest. So we're very excited to have that here in the Administration Building lobby from noon to one. Supervisor Vasquez is going to be presenting on the 22nd, a presentation titled Mayan Calendar at noon. So that's a great presentation as well. Treasurer Benatar, Sarah Benatar, will be presenting on the 29th. We have Abby Buckham from the Recorder's Office. She will be presenting on the 30th of September. Miguel Vasquez is going to be who has presented before and is back again for an encore presentation, October 3rd, Contributions to the Southwest. That's going to be in person at noon. October 5th, we are going to have an early morning event, which we've had many years ago before COVID, which is called Coffee in Spanish, where people can come and practice their Spanish-speaking skills, enjoy some pastries and coffee. That will be from 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM on Wednesday, October 5th. Ruth Eaton, the former Chair of CHOC, is going to do two presentations, one on the 12th of October and actually one on the 19th of October. So we're extending Hispanic heritage a little bit past the 15th. Cynthia Nemeth will present on growing up in Spain. And then Assessor Armando Ruiz and former Assessor Chris Mazan are going to do a presentation on October 20th as a Lunch and Learn at noon as well. So lots of great opportunities to learn and hear stories from employees, from community members, from former employees, and really looking forward to all the opportunities for employees to gather and learn together.
Thank you. We in Coconino County have had a great history of Hispanic and Latino and Latina leaders. So, and it sounds like many of them will be presenting, which is lovely. So that's wonderful. And I just want to know, who gets to judge the salsa contest?
Well, the Members of the Diversity Committee are going to help with that, and Members of CHOC have helped with that before. So I encourage everyone to come out and bring their favorite salsa recipe. Sometimes it's easier just to get to taste everything and not have to decide.
I would agree with that. Good.
Outstanding samples. So thanks to everyone who's going to be a judge as well.
Thank you. Other Members of the Board would like to be heard. Supervisor Ryan.
There we go. That works well. Thank you, Madam Chair. Now be careful being a judge. I remember when I learned my lesson quickly, I was a judge of a beauty contest. And you will be scrutinized quite a bit if you step in as a judge for these competitions. So first and foremost, Danny and Frank, you know, thank you and the rest of the Members of CHOC, just being there and helping us, helping us celebrate our culture. of CHOC, just being there and helping us help helping us celebrate our cultures and in this case, our Hispanic Latino populations. But beyond that, that's what we do. We're sharing as a community. And, you know, as I look at Danny, I always think of working with Joe in the past and a lot of what he advocated for. But I'm also looking at our our replacement for Liz Archuleta with Aronimo Vasquez that won his election in our District Two, which has a larger Hispanic population. And and we have a good leader that stepped into the seat. I also want to bring up, as I think, Elizabeth Archuleta, because she helped work to put together our Diversity Committees, CHOC in this case. And just this past month, we named a park after Liz, Elizabeth Archuleta Park. And so celebrating our populations, but the leadership and the engagement in our communities is really good. I hope we have all of our community members come out and celebrate this month. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Judy Begay.
I want to thank the presenters, you know, bringing this to the board and giving us an opportunity as a board to recognize the cultural diversity and within the organization and then also really encouraging the communities to be taking a part in in this endeavor and then focusing on social justices and equity in other areas to move our communities forward. So I just want to say thank you for giving the board this opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And and also Danny and Frank and members of CHOC, thank you for bringing this important proclamation forward. And thank you for all the work you do and the outreach you do within our community. We really appreciate that. With that, we do have an important proclamation, and I'm going to turn this over to the Vice Chair and see if he would like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to designate Hispanic Heritage Month. Proclamation declaring September fifteenth through October fifteenth as Hispanic Heritage Month in Coconino County.
And and approving the proclamation, is that correct?
Yes, and approving the proclamation.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Second by Supervisor Begay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Thank you again, and we look forward to the events very much. So thank you for your assistance on reading the proclamation and really looking forward to a great month coming up. So thank you. All right. We're moving forward. We have some appointments to make here. We have consideration and possible action to appoint Tammy Oteveras to the Planning and Zoning Commission from District Three for the period of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. This is something that is coming from District Three. So I'm going to turn this over to District Three for discussion and for comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Tammy's not with us. I was looking, dialing through to see if she was out there. But I did want to have Jay come down and just comment on Tammy. But before he gets going, Tammy is my recommendation. I didn't get my letter over to you as the recommendation, but Jay moved it forward for us. And it was really interesting when I had discussions with her, just as an engaged citizen once upon a time, she with her her businesses had struggled with her interface with our Community Development Department, expressed a lot of concerns about it. After talking to her, I thought, you know, I have a sharp individual. She's got good points. But also, you know, might also be an opportunity for her to see what goes on in community development. And I invited her, would you consider to be to step on the Planning and Zoning Commission? And then I had a staff member to, you know, wonder because they they had worked with Tammy. How would she do in this situation? I said, just trust me, you know, I think it's going to work out really well. And a couple months later, staff was coming and raving about Tammy and Tammy about staff and working together and her leadership, her intensity and commitment to to study the issues has been, you know, just fantastic. She's been a great contribution. When I make appointments to commissions, I look for where gaps are. And she she brought that rural and business element to the commission that was missing at the time. And and she's been able to truly represent that and much more. So again, I'm making that recommendation. And Jay, if you could.
Thank you, Steve. Madam Chair and Supervisors, Jay Crystalman, Community Development. So I've gotten to know Tammy very well over the last nine or so years. I believe this is her third appointment as as the Planning and Zoning Commissioner for District Three. She's been our chair for probably seven years since Mark Buzzard retired. And we're very thankful to have Tammy as as the Chair of the Commission. She's extremely level-headed. She's a very independent thinker. Over the years, we've obviously had many contentious cases that generated a lot of interest from the public. And Tammy's always done a fantastic job managing that dynamic. So we're very thankful for that, and we're thankful for Supervisor Ryan's reappointment. I did ask her if she could be present, and unfortunately, she's out of town.
Thank you. And anybody would like to make some comments? If not, I'm going to turn this over to Matt Ryan to make the motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we reappoint Tammy Ontiveras to the Planning and Zoning Commission for District Three for the period of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair. We have a motion and a second to appoint Tammy Ontiveras to the Planning and Zoning Commission from District Three from June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. And would you please, when you talk with her, thank Tammy very much for her service. Really appreciate her leadership. All right, we're moving on. Community Development, oh, no, this isn't. This is HHS Director Kim Muselman will present. This is consideration and possible action to appoint Phyllis Lim to serve on behalf of Supervisor Ryan, District Three, to the Community Action Advisory Board for a two-year term to expire September two thousand and twenty-four. And before I turn it over to Kim, since this is coming from District Three, I'll turn this over once again to Matt.
Similar discussion in a different kind of way, Madam Chair. And and again, recommendation letter, I don't have in here, but this is my recommendation, or I should say, Phyllis is my recommendation. And I, how we go about finding people out there, I was just wandering through Belmont and and I started talking to this guy on the side of the street, and it ended up being Victor Lim. And and I come to find out, he was so excited about the community and wanted to be engaged and and he was out walking the dog, I believe. And and we were talking about the mailboxes, which was the biggest controversy in Belmont. But we had just placed them and was checking in to see how they're doing. And Lindsey remembers that, the mailboxes, right, Lindsey? So anyway, and come to find out, Victor had worked for the National Archives. And then he actually had talked to me a little bit about his wife, who had been very engaged in other activities associated with various levels of social services, a broad background coming from Washington. And and also, we we had an application that came in. And and I had a chance to reach out to Phyllis, and I thought, what a perfect opportunity, what a perfect match, I thought. And since then, as you'll hear from either Kim or Michelle, Phyllis has stepped in and has just been very dynamic on our Community Action Board. So a meandering way of finding people on the streets and through their through their spouses as well. So Madam Chair, I'll turn it over to to Kim. We have Phyllis here on on video.
That's what it looks like, yes. It's great. And Phyllis, thank you for joining us. So and we're going to turn this over to Kim.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Phyllis for being here with us. I just, I'm actually going to turn over, turn this over to Michelle to say a few things because Michelle has been working with Phyllis over the years and certainly has been championing our cab board. But I just wanted to, again, appreciate Phyllis. I've got to know her a little bit in in my tenure here and just appreciate all that you bring to our cab board. But I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Michelle now to just say a few things. Thank you.
Phyllis, I just want to reach out and say thank you for all that you have contributed over the past two years. You started with us, you hit the ground running, you started asking those harder questions and really providing that guidance that we truly needed as we were starting to develop our community needs assessment. You know, you helped shape that, and your questions led to areas that we were able to focus in, really focusing on poverty. But Supervisor Ryan would appreciate that it always came back to District Three. How could we make a difference in District Three? And I truly appreciate that broader perspective of advocating for your district and looking at it through that lens. And it really had us relooking at what we're offering to our seniors, our social supports that we were looking at. But it's the background that you brought to us with your, you know, experience in HUD and in the same economic groups of the CDBG and homeless programs, and your activity on other boards that really helped shape us. And I look forward to, I think, what, another ten years? We can go that far? I would love it. So thank you for all that you do, and we love having you.
Thank you, Michelle, for those kind comments. And it's wonderful to get a little bit of the background on Phyllis. Phyllis, would you like to address the board here before we consider this as a motion?
Yes, I'm delighted to be reappointed to the board. I moved to Belmont in early two thousand and twenty, from Tucson, where we lived for fifteen years. And I joined the board in June, two thousand and twenty. And of course, there's a new term coming up in two thousand and twenty-three. My background, as Michelle mentioned, was I spent thirty-two years in HUD and thirty years in Washington, DC, and two years in Tucson as the Field Office Director. That office in Tucson has since been absorbed into Phoenix. But anyway, I've I've been very much enjoyed my time on the board. I've been so impressed with the depth and breadth of activities that the board carries out, and especially during the pandemic. It was really, really tough going. And I congratulate them for the way they handled it, and hopefully, this would be a much better year.
Thank you, Phyllis, and thank you for joining us here this evening. And also, just thank you for your service. I mean, these boards are so important to our community, and they take a tremendous amount of time and effort from individuals here to come forward and and use their time to help our community, help our staff as we move forward to try to serve all the people in Coconino County. So thank you so much for your service and for taking your time with us. So really appreciate that. And unless any other comments from members of the board, otherwise?
If I may, Madam Chair.
You certainly may.
But but before I do, thank you, Phyllis. I really appreciate it. And she's reached out to me now and again just to tell me what she's been doing. But it's been a little bit of time, but I hear from Michelle now and again and what what's going on as well, and really appreciate the work that you're doing. So with that, you are my recommendation, and I move that we appoint Phyllis Lim to serve on behalf of District Three to the Community Action Advisory Board for a two-year term to expire September, two thousand and twenty-four.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. And thank you for bringing this forward, Supervisor Ryan, and thank you, Phyllis, for continuing to serve. So members of the board, we are now at the consent agenda. And for members of the public, the consent agenda is items to be considered by the board that are either routine in nature or administrative, ministerial in nature that can be handled through a single motion and a single vote. When we do it that way, however, these items are not allowed for discussion. So if, in fact, there are items to be discussed, we remove those from the consent agenda and we take those items individually and vote on them individually. So at this time, I'm going to turn to the members of my board to see about removing any items from the consent agenda. I am going to ask that we remove item thirteen, as I must recuse myself, since I am one of the parties involved in that. And also, I am going to ask that we remove item thirty-four and thirty-eight. Any other items to be removed from the consent agenda for individual discussion and action? Seeing none, at this point, I will entertain a motion from a member of the board to approve the consent agenda, items six through, goes on and on, six through thirty-eight, removing items thirteen, thirty-four, and thirty-eight. Do I have a motion?
I move.
A motion by Supervisor Begay. I have a second by Vice Chair Vasquez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Consent agenda passes. We are now going to take those three items that were removed individually. On number thirteen, it's consideration and action to amend the appointment of office for precinct committee men for Democratic Party. I am one of those individuals listed, and so I am recusing myself under the appearance of impropriety, potential appearance of impropriety. And I am going to remove myself from this discussion and vote. And at this time, I'm turning this over to Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. Madam Chair, excuse me. So this is for the consideration and possible action to approve the amendment to the appointment of the Office of Precinct Committee Men, Democratic Party, which was approved by the Board of Supervisors on June seventh, two thousand and twenty-two.
Move to approve. Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair.
Second the motion.
All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Appreciate you doing that, and we're moving forward. We are now on item thirty-four. This is an interesting one. It's consideration and possible action to approve a change of ownership from DW Tower LLC to SBA Towers, ten LLC, and transfer agreement between Coconino County and DW Towers to SBA Towers, the cell tower located at Fort Tuthill County Park. And guess where that is? We're back in District Three again. So at this point, I know I had talked to the supervisor that to have this removed, so I'm going to turn this over to Supervisor Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I had an opportunity to reach out to staff as well on this. And before we move forward, it's not time imminent. The cell tower itself, as we had it established, would also serve the Fort Tuthill area. We've had a little bit of issue associated with the shadowing effect out there, and it varies by delivery as well. What I'm asking for is for us just to pause for a moment, allow for an opportunity to take a look at the contract, take a look at the issue itself, see if we have a an opportunity for discussion and or we may have it back in the week and and have the same thing before us. But I learned when I started my career before I did from a Congresswoman, Karen English, says, Matt, you don't have to rush decisions. And so in this case, it's not time imminent. I think it would be a chance just for staff to pause for the moment, and that's why I'm asking that we would continue it to a future meeting. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So at this point, before this is a requested table, item number thirty-four.
Yes, Madam Chair.
All right. And is that a motion to?
That is the motion, Madam Chair.
And is there a second to table item thirty-four to a later meeting? Second by Vice Chair. All those in favor of table in motion thirty-four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. It is unanimous. We will table item 34 to a follow-up meeting to take action on that. So, and last but not least is item 38. Now, item 38, consideration and possible action to approve the intergovernmental agreement, IGA and addendum one between Coquenio County Community College District, the City of Flagstaff, Coquenio County, and the Arizona Border Region's Northern Arizona University to train and certify recruits as peace officers through the Arizona Peace Officer Standards Training or POST in the High Country Training Academy for the estimated cost of $130,000 in fiscal year 23. And of course, this is a wonderful arrangement between a number of partners here in Coquenio County to allow for recruitment and training of peace officers that are so needed here in Northern Arizona. With that, I'm going to turn this over to County Manager Steve Peru, who I know is going to be making an introduction.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, I'm going to just, if I could, read a couple of sections from the staff report. And then also virtually, we have Chief Deputy Axland and then also with us in the room is Dr. Nate Sutherland from Coquenio Community College. And so again, in the staff report, some of the highlights indicate that historically the Sheriff's Office has had to send peace officer recruits to other parts of the state to their academies, which are over five months long. Academies in Yuma, Tucson, Phoenix, Lake Havasu and Prescott, to name a few. The cost for these enrollment, enrollment in these academies can be over $4,000 each plus the travel, lodging and per diem. There are limited openings for each agency in these academies and the start dates do not always coincide with our hiring dates. Meetings were held with NAU, excuse me, the Northern Arizona Law Enforcement Agencies and through collaborative efforts with Coquenio Community College, Northern Arizona and City of Flagstaff, the stakeholders have created the High Country Training Academy to be utilized by not only local agencies but by other agencies in the state. There are many benefits of having a local academy. One of the largest benefits is using instructors from the Flagstaff Police Department and the Coquenio County Sheriff's Office. These instructors can provide instruction not only based on the laws of our state but our agency and community culture and policies and procedures of our agencies. When recruits complete law enforcement academies at other agencies, they are assigned a field training officer at our agency. And this begins a process of immersing them in our culture and policies. Having recruits instructed by our officers and in the academy will provide that opportunity or that process to occur much quicker. So again, Madam Chair, those are the highlights of the, of the, of the staff report. And then with your permission, I'd like to see if we can get Chief Deputy Axland up on the screen.
Chief Deputy Axland, are you there? Are you out there?
Chief Deputy Axland, if you want to unmute, and there you go, and turn your camera.
Great, thank you, County Manager and Sheriff's Man and members of the board. Yes, this is a very important endeavor for us to have a police academy here in the Flagstaff area. Like our County Manager stated, many benefits to this. Coquenio Community College has been a part of our agency, our organization or county for several years. Specifically to us, we've been operating a detention officer academy there since 2005. Each year since that time, we've, we've had and scheduled two different academies per year and we've put hundreds and hundreds of detention officers through this academy. So this is a proven partnership that we've had. We really appreciate the, as well as our partners, the Flagstaff Police Department, who has a major role in putting the training together for this High Country Training Academy and the Northern Arizona University Police Department. So we ask that you support this IGA, this IGA, and thank everyone for their support in this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And then Dr. Sutherland.
Quite as tall as the last person who was up here.
But I'm impressed you know how to use that, so.
It's, the buttons are labeled with arrows. I can, I can read that. Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm grateful to be able to be a part of this project as well. As, as has already been explained, this has long, long been needed in our area, not only to avoid losing officers to other parts of the state, but to reduce costs to the city, to the county, to other areas within our, our region. But also to help us, as County Manager Peru said, make sure that we help our officers understand the culture of the people with whom they will be working on a day-to-day basis so that they can truly provide high-quality community service in addition to enforcing the laws of our area. This, this will be open to agencies throughout the county. We've already had interest from Page Police Department and we've been reaching out to Williams as well. In addition, others across the region are interested in, in participating in this academy. We're lining up the start times so that it's offset from other academies in the state. So if agencies need to start people on a cycle that doesn't align with the other academies, we can accommodate their needs. So, so we expect that this will be a tremendously successful effort. I want to talk about two things just real quickly. There's a cost listed in your agenda. That's the cost to the college. We will be recouping that cost through charging fees to the, the officers and agencies that are coming in. We have been working on a partnership with Arizona At Work. The vast majority of the recruits coming in will qualify for funding through Arizona At Work, so there will be no cost to the agency or to the recruit. So, so we're trying to, to make this as low cost to our, our local agencies and folks as possible. The second item I would mention is that we, we've got a group of interested parties who are, are going to be gathering together to put together a legislative request for a joint agency training facility to include fire, police, EMS, and potentially dispatch and emergency operations. We're going to be pulling that group together in the next couple of weeks so that we can start to formulate a request to the state legislature to take to them in February to get a, a multi-agency training facility built up here in our area. NAU has expressed willingness to have that potentially built on their property. We're looking at a couple of other options as well. So some exciting things coming down the pike that will help multiple agencies, not just our law enforcement agencies. So happy to answer any questions, but really excited about this effort and the tremendous support we've received from the Coquenio County Sheriff's Office, Flagstaff Police Department and Northern Arizona Police Department.
Well, thank you very much. Really appreciate you joining us this evening. Very exciting program, I have to say, and something that's so needed up here in Northern Arizona. So, and once again, Coquenio Community College, you guys rock and we appreciate what you do here for Coquenio County and for our residents as well as providing job training and really career advancement. So this is very exciting and thank you for bringing it to our attention. And we have Supervisor Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I remember last legislative session, we were able to eke through, well, what about the rest of the counties? So should be interesting on this request as well and well worth the try to see if they can help out. Looks like they're going to have a surplus this year, potentially again, and it's a year to see if you can get two in a row before everybody else hops in there, so.
Absolutely. And there's been a number of these joint agency training facilities built throughout the state. There's been one in Mojave County, one was funded in Navajo County recently. There's been a couple of others and, and we feel like with all of the partners approaching the legislature together that we have a real good chance of getting that funded.
Fabulous. Other comments or questions or we entertain? Oh, I'm sorry. Supervisor Breguet.
Thank you for doing the presentation. I think it's all long overdue and we should move forward with something, you know, to, to really be helpful, you know, as far as even with the funds that are coming out and with limited dollars, you know, you've got to do what you need to do. As you presented, I'm thinking, meaning countywide, as you know, is very diverse and we have other tribes that are within the county. And I'm hoping that one of these days that, you know, they will be included in this partnership, you know, to ensure that, you know, because as you know, a lot of police officers often on the reservation are going into New Mexico, I think, to get their certifications and whatever needs to get done. So that would really help them too. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. And may I respond to that?
Absolutely, please.
So the tribal officers, we have discovered follow a federal training curriculum rather than the Arizona Police Officer Standards Training Curriculum. We are very interested in, in looking into that and delivering that curriculum as well. We needed to start with the Arizona curriculum first before we transition into the federal curriculum. And the federal curriculum also loops in the Arizona Department of Public Safety and the Federal Park Rangers as well. So, so that is definitely something that we're looking at in the future is who else can we serve? There's also opportunities to do some continuing professional training for folks who are already sworn officers, so we're going to be taking advantage of that as well.
Wonderful. Vice Chair?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for all the agencies that brought this together because this is something that's needed in Northern Arizona and appreciate Coquenio Community College and your efforts to provide that workforce development for folks to be able to advance. And I'm really excited to hear about the cultural sensitivity training that will be provided and I look forward to seeing how that helps with law enforcement here in Northern Arizona. Thank you.
And Vice Chair, would you like to make the motion?
I motion that we approve, consider and approve the intergovernmental agreement and addendum number one between the Coquenio County Community College District, the City of Flagstaff, Coquenio County, and the Arizona Border Region's Northern Arizona University to train and certify recruits as peace officers through Arizona Peace Officer Standards Training, POST, in the High Country Training Academy for an estimated cost of $130,000 in FY '23.
We have a motion? We have a second?
A second, but I have a question, real quick.
Sure. We have a motion and second and a question?
Yes. I wanted to know what funds are going to be used of that $130,000? How is it going to be funded?
So through a combination of things, the, the majority of that cost is for the staffing of the academy. So we'll have a full-time class sergeant who is actually going to be on loan force for the first couple of years from Flagstaff PD. We'll also have a full-time administrative assistant for the program and then there's reserve officer or recruit training officers and some other staff that are involved. So that's where the majority of the cost comes from. The, that cost will be offset by a combination of program fees that will be charged to the agencies on behalf of the recruits. Those are the fees I was mentioning that, that will be covered largely by Arizona At Work. The other part of it is being covered by the college's general fund, in part through proceeds that have come through our recent election that happened in May. So there will be a combination of college general fund and, and program fees.
I'll second the motion then.
We have a motion. We have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Thank you very much and thank you for being with us this evening. We are moving on. We must resolve to consider a matter for the Public Health District Consent Agenda. Can I please get a, a motion for us to resolve as the Health District Board of Directors?
Second, the motion.
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. It's unanimous. We are now the Health District Board of Directors. We have a item here under consent agenda, consideration and possible action to designate the Chief Health Officer of Health and Human Services to receive and review the quality management report issued by the Health and Human Services Clinic per the quality management plan of the licensure requirement of the Arizona Department of Health Services per Members of the board, do I have a motion to accept this consent item?
Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve this consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. We have passed it and we are now needing to resolve back as the Board of Supervisors. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by, I'm sorry Supervisor Ryan. All those, what's his name? The guy from District Three? We are now, do I have a motion? We have a motion and a second to resolve as a Board of Supervisors. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now we need to wear our hats as the Flood Control District Board of Directors. Do I have a motion? A motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second to resolve as the Flood Control District Board of Directors. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? It is unanimous. We have Flood Control District Consent Agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda. Does anyone want to remove any item on the consent agenda or can we consider this in one motion and one action without discussion?
Madam Chair, I'll move the, for approval of the consent agenda.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda, items 40 and 41. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. We're moving on. We also have as Flood Control District Directors, an action item. Action item number 42 is consideration and possible action to approve the submittal of an application to secure an emergency watershed protection program grant from the Natural Resource Conservation Service, NRCS, in the amount of $2,213,880.27 to engineer and construct emergency mitigation measures with a district, that's a Coquenio County district match of the Board of the Flood Control District, in the amount of $651, $651,293.43. At this time, County Manager, would you like to have this turned over to Lucinda Andriani, our Flood Control District Director?
Yes, we could. If we could, please. I don't see.
Is she? Is she here with us? Okay, number 42.
I'll go ahead and read the stat where at least the title of the action to, into the record.
Thank you.
Unless we will reach out to Lucinda.
Just texted. We'll see.
Okay.
I believe we are, we've been made aware from past board meetings about this. It looks like this is our application that we needed in order to secure that emergency watershed protection grant, EWPP grant money from NRCS, in order to do the mitigation measures that we've been talking about for the Schultz Pipeline flood area. And, and of course, this is going to require a match here from Coquenio County in order to proceed with this money or in order to proceed with going over $2 million. So that's what I understand. Is there anything further that you have on that, County Manager?
No, Madam Chair. We have been, staff has been presenting through a series of corridor meetings, the impact of the flooding and the engineering recommendations for some of the mitigation. And so as the chair indicated, this is one of several applications that are going to be submitted to offset the costs of, of the flooding. The local cost, as you see here, is a portion of the total. And again, we are going to be going into detail of the mitigation measures at the September 20th Board of Directors Meeting of the Flood Control. But for timing, we had to get this on the agenda this evening to submit it right away.
Yeah, as what I understand from this application, it needs to get in immediately in order to get us on the list for consideration under the NCRS grant, as I understand it.
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Any to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I have the staff report available if you'd like me to read that.
I, I think we've had enough information that was given to us as board members. I'd like to make a motion at this time, Madam Chair.
I think that's in order. I think all of us have received a lot of information on this. So we have a motion before us? Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Second by Vice Chair. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Oh, sorry.
Yes, I want to read that. I want to read the, read it out here for the record. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the submittal of an application to secure an emergency watershed protection program grant from the Natural Resources Conservation Service, NRCS, in the amount of $2,213,880.27 to engineer and construct emergency mitigation measures with a district match of $651,293.43.
That was perfect. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second with the numbers having been read out to proceed. We have a motion and a second with the numbers having been read out to proceed with the application for the Emergency Watership Protection Program Grant. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. Members of the board, we now must resolve back as the Board of Supervisors. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. We are now, once again, the Board of Supervisors. And we have a couple of public hearings before us, and the first one is item number 43. This is public hearing, consideration and possible recommendation of approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Controls regarding an application number 169477 for a Series 01 craft distillery liquor license for Oak and Iron Distillery LLC located at 13416 East Pioneer Path, Parks, Arizona, 86018. And the agent is Jacob Allen Newton. And I understand this is in District Four, is that correct? You know, you're getting all of them. Can we give it to? No, just kidding. All right. I should, if, since it's a liquor license, I should have known this was District Three. And interestingly, I know this is a craft distillery. This is the first time, I think, we've had the craft distillery before us. We, as you know, have a Clerk of the Board, Lindsay Daly, who is going to present this item and give us background information on item 43. And is the agent present, Lindsay?
Chair Horseman, he is not present. He is currently traveling, so could not be here tonight.
Very good. So I'm going to turn it over to you to kind of bring us through this, and then we'll ask questions in here once again from District Three Superintendent, Supervisor, sorry, the Superintendent just left, so.
Thank you, Chair Horseman. The agent is Jacob Allen Newton. He is applying for a new liquor license application, Series 18 craft distiller for Oak and Iron Distillery, to be located at 13416 East Pioneer Path in Parks, Arizona. The liquor license application is located in District Three Supervisor Ryan's district. This is the first time we've seen a Series 18 craft distiller come through the office of the Clerk's office. The notice was published or posted at the location for 20 days, and we did not receive any comments or concerns during this time regarding the application. The application was reviewed by our Community Development Department, Risk Manager, Health and Human Services, and Sheriff's Office, and they did not have any concerns regarding the application. The Board itself does not issue the license, but makes its recommendation based on knowledge of the area and desires of the community to the state liquor department. I just wanted to note too, this agent did apply for a conditional use permit through the Planning and Zoning Commission and was successful in getting a CUP for this business. And in doing that process, he needed to notify neighbors around the area, and there wasn't any concerns regarding it during that process as well, as far as the business goes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Clerk of the Board of Supervisors. And normally, at this point, we would ask the agent. He isn't here, and it sounds like all of the requirements for the liquor license have in fact been met, and there have been no objections. Is that correct?
That is correct, Chair.
Then I'm going to turn this over to Supervisor Ryan to provide further information before I open this up for a public hearing.
Madam Chair, just for a moment, just to ask questions a little bit and just double checking. And I heard from Lindsay, as she had discussions with Jay, it was a conditional use permit. The intent is pretty much to function the facility, within the facilities, not an intent to engage publicly in the sales. Jay's not as head. But Jay, if you could come up and just comment on that real quick. It helps give a little bit more background. This isn't usual, so.
It's District Three, so we expect the unusual.
Madam Chair and Supervisor Ryan, thank you. Yes, they did apply for and obtain their conditional use permit about two months ago. The intent is to produce the spirits on site and then distribute it by himself. There's no employees there, off-site, and no consumption, at least not from the public. I'm sure he's going to consume his spirits, but that's, hopefully fills in with the details you need.
And then also, when you had the CUP, as I understand, there was no opposition associated with the neighbors, and it had been posted with them, correct?
Madam Chair and Supervisor Ryan, that's correct. There was no public opposition.
And that just helps build a broader background associated with the community and with the application coming forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and thank you very much. Appreciate it, Jay.
Thank you.
Members of the board, any questions before we do open this up to the public? Seeing no questions at this time. This is a public hearing for consideration and recommendation of approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control regarding an application for a Series 18 craft distillery liquor license for Oak and Iron Distillery, which is located at 13416 East Pioneer Path in Parks, Arizona. The agent is not with us, but we have received information from members of our county staff. And at this time, members of the public, it is time for you to weigh in on this. If you have any questions, concerns, or would like to provide comment, now is your time to do so. I'm going to turn this over to our Clerk, Lindsay Daly, to explain how you can appear before us, or if anybody is here in person that would like to be heard on this, raise your hand and let us know. So Clerk Daly.
Thank you, Chair. At this time, if there's anybody that is on the virtual format of the meeting that would like to provide a comment during this public hearing, you can raise your hand by hitting the raise hand icon that looks like a hand if you hover at the bottom of your screen, and that will raise your hand and notify us that you would like to speak. If you are on the telephone, you can hit star nine, and that will raise your hand to notify us that you would like to speak.
Members of the public, now is your time to be heard.
And there are no hands raised?
All right, and there's none here in our meeting room. And so, members of the public, you have one further chance. If you would like to be heard on this, you've heard Clerk Daly explain how you can reach the Board.
Still no hands raised.
Members of the Board, members of the public, at this time, I am closing our public hearing, and I'm turning it over to members of the Board. Are there any questions, concerns, or comments? Yes, Supervisor Ryan?
Madam Chair, I'm ready for a motion, if you're willing.
I will entertain such.
Madam Chair, I move that we make a recommendation of approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control regarding application 169477 for a Series 18 craft distillery liquor license for Oak and Iron Distilleries, Distillery LLC, and that is located at 13416 East Pioneer Path, Parks, Arizona, with a zip code of 86018. Thank you, Madam Chair.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is passed, and we will be making the recommendation of approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor License. And congratulations and best luck to Oak and Iron Distillery. Members of the Board, we are continuing on. We have more public hearings today. Number 44 and 45 are the same liquor license for the same business, Cliff Dweller Lodge. I'm going to once again turn this over to our Clerk, Lindsay Daly, to bring us through both items 44 and 45. Clerk Daly.
Thank you, Chair Horseman. Again, this is regarding item 44 and 45. It is the same agent that is applying for these liquor licenses. One of them, item 44, is for a Series 6 bar liquor license for Cliff Dwellers Lodge located at Milepost 547, Highway 89, in Marble Canyon, Arizona, which is in Supervisor District Five. The agent is Andrea Lukowits, and she is present here tonight on the meeting. And the other one is a Series 10 beer and wine store for Cliff Dwellers Lodge, located at Milepost 547, Highway 89, Marble Canyon, Arizona, Agent Andrea Lukowits. Both of these applications were provided to our departments, Community Development Department, Health and Human Services, our Risk Manager, and our Sheriff's Office. None of the departments had concerns regarding the applications. The business is, has been sold to a new owner, so that's why we're going through the process of the applications for the liquor licenses. The Board does not make the decision and issue the license, but does offer a recommendation to the State Department of Liquor based on knowledge of the area. The hearing notice was posted at the location for both Series liquor licenses for 20 days, and we did not receive any comments or concerns regarding the applications. Thank you.
Very good. And we will take the vote for both of these separately, but I know we have the agent here with us, and so I think it's appropriate that we go ahead and hear from her, and if everybody's, if this is okay with members of the Board, just go ahead and hear from her on items 44 and 45, even though we will take the hearing and the ultimate motion separately for both of these. Is that okay with everyone? All right. That being the case, then, if the agent wants to come up and talk about item 44 and 45 before we open both of these up individually for public hearings.
Good afternoon, Chair Horseman and members of the Board. I'm Andrea Lukowits, the agent for the Series 6 and Series 10 applications. You may be familiar with the business here, the Cliff Dwellers Lodge. Mr. and Mrs. Gunn, who have owned and operated the business for many, many years, are getting closer to retirement, and so they have brought in additional owners. However, Mr. and Mrs. Gunn will remain involved in both the management and ownership of a portion of the business as they transition this. The new owners are very much interested in the area. They fell in love with it. They want to retain all the beauty and character and don't intend to, you know, open Disneyland or anything down there. So they're looking forward to continuing the business with the Series 6 and 10 license.
Thank you for joining us this evening. And members of the Board, any questions while we have the agent available to us? Any questions for members of the Board? All right, seeing none. And I understand, if I can, just to summarize this, Clerk Daly, both 44 and 45, in fact, have met the requirements of law in their application, and there have been no objection on either 44 or 45. Is that correct?
That is correct, Chair Horseman.
All right. Then we, at this time, will go to number 44, which is consideration and possible action for approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control regarding an application 203562 for a Series 006 bar liquor license for Cliff Dweller Lodge located at Milepost 547, Highway 89, Marble Canyon, Arizona, 86036. We did hear from the agent. At this time, we're going to open this up for public hearing. I'm going to again turn this over to Clerk Lindsay Daly to explain to members of the public how they can join us at this public hearing.
Thank you. At this time, for the public hearing on item number 44, if you would like to make a comment, you can raise your hand by hitting the raise hand icon that looks like a hand at the bottom of your screen, and that will notify us that you would like to speak. If you've joined us by telephone, you can hit star nine, and that will raise your hand and notify us that you would like to speak.
Members of the public, now is your time to be heard.
And at this time, we have no hands raised?
Very good. I don't see anyone here at the meeting room wanting to be heard. So members of the public, this is the last call to be heard at this public hearing.
And still no hands raised?
All right. Then at this time, I am closing the public hearing, and I'm turning this over to my Board members. Are there any questions, concerns, comments, or a motion?
Madam Chair, noting that Supervisor Fowler typically would make the initial motion associated with this, and hearing, you know, the evidence provided that there's no conflict associated with this, you know, I'm willing to make the motion that we recommend approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control regarding the application 203562 for a Series 6 bar liquor license for Cliff Dwellers Lodge, located Milepost 547, Highway 89, Marble Canyon, Arizona, 86036. That's my motion, Madam Chair.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that that has been approved, and we will be making the recommendation of approval. The Arizona Department of Liquor License, and once again, again, our congratulations to Cliff Dwellers Lodge, and best of luck on the change in ownership. So we're going to move on to number 45. This is another public hearing. We've already heard from the agent on this. Are there any questions before I open number 45 to a public hearing? Seeing none. This is a public hearing, consideration and possible recommendation of approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control regarding a liquor license application number 203554 for a Series 010 beer and wine store for Cliff Dweller Lodge, located at Milepost 547, Highway 89, Marble Canyon, Arizona, 86036. And we did hear from the agent, Ms. Lukowits. And any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we are opening this for a public hearing. I am turning this over to Clerk Daly to explain how members of the public can join us for the public hearing.
Thank you. If you would like to provide a comment for item 45 public hearing, you can hit the raise hand icon that looks like a hand when you hover at the bottom of your screen, and that will notify us that you would like to speak. If you've joined us by phone, you can hit star nine, and that will raise your hand and notify us that you would like to speak.
Members of the public, now is your time.
And there are no hands raised?
I didn't see no hands raised here at the, at our boardroom. This is the last call, members of the public, if you'd like to be heard.
No hands raised, Chair.
Thank you so much. At this point, I will, in fact, close the public hearing on item number 45. Members of the Board, I'm going to turn it over to you for any questions, comments, concerns, or a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Supervisor Breguet.
I move that we recommend approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control regarding a liquor license application number 203554 for a Series 10 beer and wine store for Cliff Dweller Lodge, located at Milepost 547, Highway 89, Marble Canyon, Arizona, 86036.
Thank you very much. We have a motion. Do I have a second? We have a second from Vice Chair. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. And once again, congratulations to Cliff Dwellers. Look forward to seeing you in the future. Members of the Board, we now have another item. This is item 46, discussion and possible action to approve Resolution 2022-23, approving the sale and execution and delivery of pledged revenue obligations in one or more series, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of necessary agreements, instruments, and documents, delegating authority to determine certain matters with respect to the foregoing declaration of an emergency. And members of the Board, as you are aware, we have heard information that's been presented in the past about going out and pledging revenue obligations in order to help to pay for, I should say, yeah, to fund our ASRS. And so that's what this is a continuation of. And with this, I'm turning this over to our County Manager, who I think will also introduce Siri Mulaney too for this issue.
Individuals that have been assisting us with this financial invest-in transaction. So with your permission, I'll turn it back over to Siri Mulaney, our Chief Financial Officer, that will present the item, and then also call on the members of the team that have assembled this as needed. So Siri?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, County Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, county manager. So just a few introductory comments for the benefit of the public that may not have seen the other discussions that we've had on this topic. I know the board, you know, has a lot of background. We have had a few discussions with the board regarding this. We've also had a public hearing. So this is sort of the final step in the process, if you will. But just as, again, a reminder or information to any members of the public. So, Coquenino County is a member of the Arizona State Retirement System, or ASRS, as we'll refer to it for the rest of the discussion. We do have an unfunded liability in the ASRS retirement plan. It is a multiple employer plan. So our portion of the liability can change based on our relative participation compared to the other employers, and then, of course, plan performance and other changes and assumptions. But as of right now, we do have a pretty large unfunded liability. And what we're asking the board to do is to take action, allowing staff to move forward with a potential debt restructure of the plan, where we're really issuing, we would be issuing debt on behalf of the county and at essentially a lower interest rate than we, the assumed rate of return with Arizona State Retirement System, meaning we could make a deposit with ASRS, and on average, based on prior performance experience, greater investment returns on that money that we then would draw from to offset our annual liability for our payment to ASRS. So overall, what we're looking at could be in the neighborhood of, just depending on the structure of how we pull out offsets against our plan obligations. But we're looking to save taxpayers, hopefully, in terms of just cash flow, around $50 million of savings, and also reducing that obligation timeline. Currently, the unfunded liability is structured for payment over 24 years. We would be reducing that timeline to 21 years, while looking to have savings potentially up to 34 years or offsets really from the plan. So overall, savings to our taxpayers. And so that's really the proposal that's before you. And with those comments, I also just want to point out, I did send an email earlier this evening with some updated documents, and the clerk has also received those for the record. When we did the initial packet, we did not have final documents, but now we do. So those are provided for the board. They're not significantly changed from what you've seen already in your packet. So it's more just making sure you have the latest and greatest versions, you know, with some typos corrected and a few other things adjusted for your reference if you need it, and then just for the record. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to, we have our colleagues at Stiefel. We've been working with Stiefel on this, and they have a brief presentation for you. So Omar, I'm not sure if you were taking it over, or? Great.
Thank you very much, Siri, and thank you, Chairwoman Horstman, and members of the board. As you know, we've talked on this topic a number of times, and I think Siri has covered the points. We're glad to take you through some of the pages or address some of the things in the market. And I know we have some, Siri, did you want to go, did you want us to go through any specific pages, or just to cover some of the high points in the market?
Oh, thank you, Omar. And actually, I think in your packet, there should be, it's really a one-page presentation. There were three, three total pages. One's a cover page, one's a page of disclosures. But the other page is more for your reference of just anticipated savings. It's a, it's been refreshed since then with updated market information. So Omar, maybe if you just want to give a brief market update and the next steps, and then we can entertain any questions?
If I can, maybe to kind of limit, or you don't need to limit anything, but to frame some of your comments. You know, obviously, when we first received the information on this and looked at the possibility of saving substantial money for our taxpayers by doing this, the interest rate was substantially less, substantially lower. So I think it would be nice to talk about the, how this has changed, and what has this meant in terms of the actual, if we go forward on this, the actual savings to our taxpayers here in Coquenino County.
Absolutely, and that's very much, I appreciate you framing it that way, because that's exactly what we want to talk about today. So, you know, we can, we all watch TV and the news and the media, and we've seen, you know, the Fed is taking action. You know, there's a lot of movement in the market. The Federal Reserve, FOMC, will be meeting on September the 21st, at which it's expected that the Fed will be increasing interest rates by, or the Fed funds rate by as much as 75 basis points. The market's priced most of that in, and with that, we've started to see some movement in the treasury market, which underlies the borrowing rates associated with the county's numbers. And so, you know, to give you an idea of, you know, Siri had referenced the gross cash flow savings. Back when we had talked about this in, on August the 19th, the cash flow savings were just north of $60.8 million. Today, we estimate those to be between 55.5 to 55.9, give or take a bit. You know, obviously, the market moves, and until you sell the bonds, you know, the market's moving by the moment. On a present value basis, the savings level that we would anticipate were you to go to market in the near term would be between 17 and 18% if the assumed earnings rates were met. And so, one of the things, while we've mentioned that treasury rates have gone up, we do have some anticipation, given the county's strength of ratings and the positive reception that the county has received in the past from investors. We'd expect, actually, to be able to tighten credit spreads, and really, we've, you know, started to aggressively market the county and the strength of all the good things going on in Coquenino County to investors. And so with that, you know, we'd expect, again, present value savings of approximately 17 to 18%, which would equate to between 8.7 and 9.1 million dollars over the course of the term. Obviously, those numbers could be higher if ASRS were to earn in excess of the assumed 7% over the course of the next 30 years. They could also be lower, were those to be lower. When we backtested ASRS earnings in the past, I think the lowest we've seen is approximately 7.7%. And so, you know, right now, you know, we talked about, a little bit about the timing. There's an anticipation that rates are going to continue to rise. So this is viewed as, you know, a better window to go. And I would agree with you, members of supervisors. You know, we've talked about this as we've gone through the process. Obviously, rates were lower. The other side of this is, you know, anyone who's looked at your 401K or other retirement or savings or so forth, and maybe I shouldn't talk about dark things at night. The other side of this is the monies will be invested with ASRS. When they're deposited in ASRS, you'd deposit them at a market level, which would mean that you're going to be doing this, you know, to the extent that the stock market has fallen, you're going to be buying at a lower asset valuation and potentially have more growth in those assets held in trust for the county over the next 30 years. So I'll pause there and see, one, Siri, if there's anything else you wanted me to add to that, and/or two, if, Madam Chair, if there are any questions or comments or things that we can help assist with. Because, again, you know, this is something we've thought about a lot, and you're right, you know, the interest rates have risen some. There's still an attractive borrowing rate available. The sort of countervailing force there is the fact that equities and the buy-in that you'll have will be at a more attractive level than it would have been a number of months ago. So there's a little bit of give and take there.
All right, and I'm going to ask if members of the board have any questions or that they would like to raise, or comments they'd like to raise at this time? Can you hear us? Could you hear?
I'm sorry, I can't hear anything.
Okay.
So I, every question was answered, but perhaps I couldn't, just couldn't hear.
Sorry, having technical difficulties. So in the, in the staff report, it said alternatives. And what happens if it is not, if this isn't approved today? And what's the amortization schedule set by ARS?
So thank you Supervisor Vasquez and members of the board. So there, if this were not to be approved today, the status quo would continue, meaning we continue with having our unfunded liability, and that we continue to pay it off then over that 24-year horizon, that it's being amortized with Arizona State Retirement System. So potentially, you know, we're anticipating that would be a higher cost to taxpayers, but it is the status quo. There is definitely a do-nothing scenario, if you will, or a turning this down right now scenario that just sort of keeps us where we were prior to this proposal. And then in terms of the amortization with the Arizona State Retirement System, I think that's one of the nice things that we've been working through, and I'm sure Omar can speak more to this and others, but that, that they don't set our amortization schedule under this plan. We set the amortization schedule. And so that gives us a little more freedom on an annual basis to take a look at our cash flow needs, our debt service, and the offsets, how the performance has been to maxim, really maximize savings, and if we are able to leave our funds invested longer to get more savings. It gives us the opportunity to do that. But if we also experience a need to take offsets on a different schedule, the plan does allow us to change the amortization schedule from the employer perspective rather than from the plan perspective. And Omar, if you want to add or correct anything I said there?
No, Siri, you hit it perfectly. And, you know, as you guys know, Siri has been involved in helping craft this plan with ASRS, and it's a really innovative program in the sense that Coquenino County is able to take control of that portion of the liability in a way that maximizes the benefit for the county. In this instance, it allows you to shorten your repayment through the use of debt service while extending the benefit to the county, and frankly, taking those earnings with ASRS over a longer period of time. Siri had mentioned it is flexible, and it's actually more flexible than any plan I've worked with over the years in the sense that you could amend how much or how little you want to use in the offset with 60 days' notice at any time. And so that's a very attractive feature in the sense that, you know, it's currently contemplated that, you know, most of the benefit is further out in the future, right, in order to shorten the repayment. However, if the county ran into a period in which more resources were needed at the direction of Siri, it would be possible to adjust that offset to provide additional resources. So in many ways, it serves as a well-invested strategic reserve as well. So it serves a number of features, but as Siri said, it's very flexible and very well thought out.
Thank you. And then the other question I had is, if we approve this, how would it limit the county's capacity to take out other bonds in the next five, 10, or 20 years?
Thank you Supervisor Vasquez, and we have, that is something we have been looking at. Omar, if you want to give your opinion on that, as sort of the expert, and?
Absolutely, thank you Supervisor, thank you Siri, and thank you Supervisor Vasquez. When we've looked at the capacity numbers, as you know, the county enjoys very strong finances, and I don't have those exact capacity numbers at my fingertips, but it is in the neighborhood of several hundred million dollars additional borrowing that the county could undertake. You know, I recall that number. I don't want to quote a specific number, but it was many hundreds of millions. And, you know, that's without any sort of projected growth beyond what you already have in there. So that would be even net of doing this transaction.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you, Omar, if I can also add in. So we did, we did take a look at those numbers, and it still leaves us for just pledged revenue that we have. So our general sales tax is a main one, and our state shared sales tax. From that perspective, the number was between 200 and 300 million still of capacity of pledged revenue right now, what we have with that revenue stream. And then we also have the ability to go to the voters and ask to pledge our property taxes if we so choose, in which case we're limited by the Arizona Constitution to a percentage, basically, of our assessed value, but that's a secondary debt capacity that we also have as an organization.
Thank you.
Yeah, so Madam Chair, I want to just comment on, when we look at, and Supervisor Vasquez's question about what does the horizon look like going forward when we look at the needs of the county? And so, you know, when we look at the needs of the county, we're looking at probably the larger area that we'd be looking at going into the future would be from the capital facilities discussion that we had earlier this year. And so, looking at that in terms of county facilities, obviously, some of the areas where we need to do some building, we need to look at how we can change out some of the facilities that we have. We also have needs with regard to forest restoration. That has become a huge issue going forward just due to the post-fire flooding that we're getting. And so that is another large investment. And then the other investment would be from the, in addition to forest restoration, would be the flood mitigation work that is being looked at at this current time. We have the engineering teams from both the private sector, city, and county, all looking at the flood mitigation measures for the affected areas. And so, you know, when we look at it into the horizon, the county does, if you want to say, we benefit from the fact that we've always been a fairly pay-as-you-go organization. The debt, actually, prior to the public safety retirement prepayment this year, where we financed, similar to what we're doing with Arizona State Retirement, the county didn't have any debt. And that's pretty unusual for a local government not to have standing debt. And so we have not been an organization that tends to finance a lot. And when we do, we tend to do a lot of that pay-as-you-go so that can we reduce the overall cost. But again, the big items going forward, just to recap, capital facilities, which is always reinvesting in our facilities, as well as technology. And technology now is so expensive that we lump that into capital, even though it is, you know, has a life cycle to it. Forest restoration, given the fact that we live in the largest ponderosa pine forest in the world. And then finally, looking at flood mitigation for affected areas. So I think those are kind of, that's what the horizon looks like.
And thank you. And before you leave, and I asked you this question before, but I think it's important to explain to the, all of us in the public, is just how does this affect our debt limit? Because, of course, we always need to worry about that as well.
So the, I'm going to ask Siri to chime in on how this issuance and the debt service from this obligation, how that factors into our expenditure limit.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. So from the original question about the debt limit, so this, this is not subject to the debt limit that's in the Constitution, although we are limited by the bond covenances of our original debt service. And then this subsequent offering, we would be limited to the amount that we could pledge against these revenues, or we could, I'm sorry, issuing debt against these revenues as being pledged. But there is no other, like statutory restriction. The debt limit that we have that is constitutional is limited to pledged property tax revenues, because in this case, we're not proposing to pledge any property tax revenues. This is not subject to that debt limit, so it basically keeps it intact, if you will. The other good thing, though, from the expenditure limitation, excuse me. So there's two ways we, when we talk about expenditure limit, I want to make sure we're talking about common language, because we use that in two different ways. One is our annual expenditure limit, where, once we set our budget, we cannot go over that in terms of the total amount that we're spending. Because we had been proposing this during the budget development process, we actually built this in as a placeholder into our budget. So we do have space to make the deposit with ASRS if we were to move forward. We built that in already, so that capacity is clean, and we don't foresee any issues there. And the second way that we talk about expenditure limitation is the Arizona constitutional limit on local, the expenditures of local revenues. And the nice thing, actually, about debt is that debt is exempt from that. Um, and the nice thing actually about debt is that debt is exempt from that, and, uh, payments towards debt service, rather, are exempt from that limitation. So, um, anything that we change from, uh, an annual expenditure to ASRS for our, um, liability for, for our retirement system is subject to that limitation, meaning there's no exclusion. Um, if we're using local revenues, then, um, there, it's considered part of sort of our total that we can spend locally as an organization. But if we make a debt service payment, it is excluded, which means we get a special exception from our overall limitation to pay our debt. And so, it's a benefit overall to, um, issue debt, um, for a purpose that we were already going to expend funds and, and in fact, expend a higher amount of funds towards, um, from the expenditure limitation perspective.
Thank you, Siri. Good. I think that's important because it is a concern of us of going up against our local revenue limits. So, in some ways, this gives us greater flexibility, if you will, moving forward, i- if we would go forward on this. Uh, and, and I can say, I liked it better in August. Uh, I liked the savings to our community, our taxpayers, much better in August. On the other hand, I do note that there is still significance, uh, significant tax saving, uh, to our community going forward with this, uh, which I think is important. Uh, any, any ways we can act, uh, to, to limit, uh, the payments that our community has to make, our taxpayers have to make, we have to take a serious look at it. The second concern that I have is that time is of the essence. We said that back in August, and we saw how much time was of the essence. And so, I think if in fact, we go forward with this today, we need to go through with all due speed because, um, time has not been on our side as we move forward, um, with the interest rates and with changes to the economy. So, is this something you envision that we could get done relatively quickly?
Yes, thank you, Chair and members of the board. To address, um, sort of the timing lag that we did experience, some of it was because we actually didn't have the legal or statutory authority to do this. So, while it was being proposed at the state, we were doing simultaneous efforts in our meetings with the board. And so, we're happy to say that now, um, those pieces have all come together timing-wise, but it, that is why, you know, we sort of had to, we geared up, we got going, and then we sort of had to slow down while we were waiting for the legal authority. But now that we have that, yes, we are, this is the final step, and we would be moving forward. And Omar, if you want to talk a little more about the timeline, please?
Absolutely. Tha, thank you, thank you very much, Siri, and, uh, members of the board. So, one of the really thoughtful things here that Siri and Steve and, and the team have done i- is to, uh, sort of, as the sort of legal authority was being worked out on the ASRS side, uh, to work through the, all the sort of structural and strategic considerations, um, you know, to be able to do this. Uh, with that being said, there are, you know, legal documents and, um, you know, preliminary discussions. And in fact, you know, we've worked to line up, um, you know, investors that are willing and eager to invest in the county, um, which would help get the most attractive rate. Um, so, if, if the decision today amongst the board is to move forward, we could be, uh, selling this within the next couple of days, um, which would mean you'd be able to set interest rates, um, towards the later part of this week. Um, that would mean you would have proceeds, you know, there's a whole legal closing process, uh, you know, approximately, um, two and a half to three and a half weeks, uh, after that. So, you know, it's really on the fastest schedule possible, again, thanks to a lot of hard work, uh, by, by Siri, uh, Abby, her staff, uh, a- and, and obviously, uh, Manager Peru, um, you know, it's, it's, you know, they've really thought through everything because, you know, every, every day that you wait is essentially betting against the Federal Reserve Bank.
I think that's right. I think we either go forward with it tonight, or it doesn't look good. So, and I, I think it's also probably important to note that this was, in fact, uh, on April 5th, a public hearing was conducted pursuant to statute, and is it my understanding that in fact, no comments were, were received on that? Is that a correct statement?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, that is correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or concerns, Supervisor Ryan?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, thank you. A- and, um, Omar covered, uh, one of my questions, uh, was when, when they hope to sell it because we are concerned about the feds and when they move, uh, associated with it. Do you, do you have, uh, um, yeah, it's interesting. A general idea of, uh, what you might anticipate in terms of rates associated with this?
Uh, that's, that's right. And, uh, you know, I think, you know, I'm, I'm going to call it somewhere between 5.6 and 5.7% borrowing rates. Um, and that is, again, as a reminder, because this is invested in taxable proceeds, this is a taxable borrowing, it is not, um, you know, a tax-exempt, you know, like for a capital project or so forth. Um, a, as a, as a means of comparison, when we looked at this in August, it was 5.18%.
And then, um, the other, uh, question actually is, uh, Siri, you say, said you sent the update, and, and I had copied it off. I'm trying to find it in my, uh, electronic. I can't find it right now. It's in there somewhere. But I think it would be important for the record of, uh, and Steve, you and I were talking about...
Supervisor Ryan, I, I don't know, Siri, I can't...
There you go.
Oh, there you go.
I'm back. Uh, so, the question is, uh, Steve was saying technology is expensive, and I'm watching us roll through, uh, these spe, these not working.
I won't even go there.
Yeah, I know. Um, so, uh, anyway, um, I'm, I'm, Steve and Siri speaking to, um, uh, the, the gain that we still are looking at associated with this, uh, in what you had in your, uh, memo that you sent out earlier. That would be helpful for the public record. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Supervisor Ryan and, and Chair and members of the board. So, actually, the update I sent out was just updated documents, um, that were more of the legal documents, the legal side of things. Um, I did not provide updated, um, numbers in terms of the interest rate that was, as was just stated, um, only because it had, it has been changing. Um, you have one in your packet that had, I think it was more of a, around a 5 and, 5.4 or something, um, rate range, something...
Madam Chair, Supervisor Ryan, Siri, can you speak, though, to the general fund savings by fiscal year for the first portion of that, and then how that changes in the out-years to a larger amount?
Sure, yes. Um, thank you, County Manager. So, the, we did run a scenario, we've, we've run several scenarios, as Omar can probably attest to, over time, of what that amortization schedule will look like, uh, to Supervisor Vasquez's earlier question. And the most beneficial to the county, if we can, if we can continue to sort of afford it with our reserves on hand and our cash flow needs, would be to defer taking any offsets, meaning continuing to pay our normal contribution to ASRS, um, for the first few years while also simultaneously making the debt service payment. Because what that allows us to do is capture a few more years of hopefully, um, again, actual savings at the, the seven, um, plus or minus, you know, 7% range, or average of 7% range at least over time for a few more years before we start drawing on them, building up a bigger balance, um, to draw from, and then starting to offset our annual, um, contribution to ASRS or our mandatory payment to ASRS, um, in the amount that is at least equal to or even, um, greater than our debt service, meaning that, um, we ran a scenario, the, this working scenario that we have right now allows us then to capture about $500,000 per year, potentially, of, of savings back to the general fund of, of recurring, um, reduced contributions as we look at the whole picture. But then with significant savings, um, after that, after we hit our, the, the end of the debt service lifecycle, which was 21 years, um, as we noted, the, in that scenario, we projected out continuing to take offsets to our contributions for 34 years, which puts us into all into, you know, 2057. That's, that is one scenario. Um, as, as we noted, though, earlier, we also ran scenarios that were, um, you know, more conservative and, well, in terms of our, our needs or our organizational ability. So, if we had something that happened from a reserve perspective where, uh, we needed to draw those offsets earlier, we did run that scenario. Um, Omar and his team actually ran a, a different scenario today of taking sort of just an annual offset, um, equal, more equal to meeting the debt service. And still, you know, the, the savings there, um, are significant, um, for taxpayers, you know, looking at, um, between the costs or the, the amount really of principal that we would be issuing in debt versus anticipated savings, we're still looking at in excess of, um, you know, 7, 8, 10, up to 10% savings, even if we were to take the, um, sort of, I, I don't know how to describe it, but the, the scenario where we're maximizing the benefit earlier on versus waiting if, if our organization needed that. So, we have a lot of flexibility with it. Um, but in every scenario, we ran, um, based on, again, just sort of average performance, no guarantee, of course, of the future, but the county and the county taxpayers come, come out ahead.
And Siri, if I may a- add on to that, um, the scenario that, you know, that you've proposed where you, you have the benefit or the, uh, the, the savings out long obviously produces the greatest savings for taxpayers, uh, by far, and that, that's what's contemplated here. Uh, when, you know, we talked, uh, informally with the ASRS Director about sort of what you're proposing in broad-brush terms, um, Director Mattson, he smiled. He was like, he's like, "That's exactly what I would do." Um, interestingly enough, when we talked to, um, Coconino County's very own, uh, Mike Townsend, and, uh, again, with broad-brush terms of, "Well, this is kind of what we're thinking about", he, he also smiled, uh, because it's absolutely the smartest thing to do fiscally. At the same time, having that flexibility to manage different things that may come up, provides the county with a lot of great benefit, uh, on, on a go-forward basis, uh, and, and I think is really innovative and thoughtful. And, uh, really, that's Siri's, um, brainchild, and I, I, I think it's, uh, i- it's a very exciting path to be on, if, if you're to ask me.
Uh, thank you. And, and of course, we've gone through some of that before, and of course, as you know, unfortunately, interest rates have changed, so, um, I think time is of the essence at this point. Uh, Supervisor Bagay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just have a comment to make. Um, in the document, it states that, um, the rate of return should exceed the borrowed funds savings to county taxpayers should result. Um, I'm not sure we're saying that there's going to be, uh, savings, a big return stuff. I think the verbiage in there, um, might have been, will exceed the borrowed funds, and also, uh, uh, the, the savers, uh, savings to the county taxpayers will result. So, I'm just kind of reading through this, and it had that on there. So, I just kind of want to bring that up. It kind of, um, threw me off for a bit there.
Thank you Supervisor Bagay and members of the board. Um, I think the language of "should" is intentional because we're basing the forecast for the future on prior performance. So, in any scenario that was run by CEFL, and, and Omar can certainly also add to this, um, it should result in savings because the performance of ASRS, um, is, is much healthier uh, if, as we look at history compared to, um, what we can get by, say, keeping funds invested, which we do, you know, we have fund balance right now, keeping fund balance invested with the county treasurers because the rules for what can be invested in for county treasurers are more, are more limiting than what pension systems can invest in. But there's no, of course, guarantee of the future. Um, and so, if something significant were to happen, of course, no one saw COVID coming, for example, that could, there could certainly be something just earth-shattering that happens, um, you know, with the invested funds to where it's hard to just make a definitive statement. But Omar, do you want to address that?
No, thank you, Siri. A- and I think "should" is, is absolutely the right way to think about this. Should, uh, you know, a- again implies that the, the past will play itself out in the future in some way. Now, um, you're looking at a long-time horizon here, you know, 30 years plus. Uh, when we did a, a historical examination of ASRS returns, and we said, "Let's try to put together all the worst things that have happened in the last 25 years. Let's put together COVID, taper tantrum, uh, financial crisis of '08, '09, i.e. Lehman Brothers, the dot-com bubble burst, and the late '90s debt crisis." When we put all those together for ASRS, uh, their, their average returns were 7.71% uh, or, or thereabout. And that was the worst time period, if you backtest. If you, we also backtested for the subs, uh, for the prior, uh, 20 years, and we found it was in excess of that in all those years. That's certainly no guarantee for the future, and we use the word "should" uh, because it's not a guarantee. Uh, it, it could be worse. But a- a- again, I mean, there's, uh, you know, we, we want to be thoughtful about understanding the fact that it's not guaranteed. Um, but that is, that is indeed, um, the history that has been there. More than that, ASRS, uh, looks at this prospectively. Um, and frankly, their 7% assumed rate is probably on the lower side. So, should, uh, you know, going to the worst, okay, things could go worse, but should, also, i- it could go to the better, um, where, you know, I think ASRS, if, if you were to talk to Director Mattson, um, they've performed in the top percentiles, um, on a regular basis, and that, that is very much their prospective forecast, that they are going to meet or beat that 7%. Um, and so, w- we use the word "should" because it's an estimate based on the assumed rate. But, you know, it could be worse, or it could be better. Um, but frankly, you know, if you're to look at ASRS's track record, and frankly, buying in when, you know, stocks have sold off quite a bit over the past few months, um, you know, y- you probably have pretty good prospects there.
Thank you. And, um, I think we have another question here, and, you know, we're having some real difficulties with these, as you can see. So, as soon as we finish this item, we are going to take a break in hopes that these things can get, um, charged up before our last item. So, uh, at this point, I'm going to turn this over to our Vice Chair for the last, uh, for the last question.
Thank you. Uh, it's, first off, it just sounds like, uh, if we are going to do this, we need to do it sooner rather than later. And so, I appreciate all the work you've put into it, uh, before we go through and prove this. So, what I would like to know is, what will be the combined debt the county will have for pension obligation bonds?
So, Madam Chair, and I'm going to turn it over to Siri. We have two, two items. Well, one that the board has approved was the public safety retirement prepayment in the amount of 18 million, I believe. And then from this would be the additional one, uh, is at about 52 million, I believe. So, those are the two items. And that is the extent of debt for Coconino County. Is, am I, am I correct, Siri?
Uh, yes, thank you, County Manager Peru. You are correct. And, um, just one other point of clarification, though, is that, um, just as with PSPRS, the debt still, i- it exists right now, and we have it. It's in a different form. It's an unfunded liability, but when we think of our financial position or our, our financial statements, um, we already are presenting this as an organizational debt, while it not, might not be structured in the same way as, you know, an actual debt issuance where we have investors who are purchasing that. As an organization, we have a large liability for pension, um, and so, it just sort of transfers it from something a little more, um, uncertain to a more level debt service with some more certainty.
Thank you.
There we go. Members of, of the board, we have had a lot of discussion on this. I appreciate the additional discussion we've had. Are there any final comments or questions? Yes, Supervisor?
Just one, Madam Chair, and, and the real piece is that last piece that we're talking about is, um, you know, what we're paying in, in, uh, the retirement sys, systems right now, uh, it, it continues to eat at us. And if we can nip away at that and reduce it down, that's where we're finding the savings of not as good a rate, but, uh, and a little bit of risk. There's always risk associated with it, but, uh, uh, it's still a benefit to the county taxpayers on this.
Yes, and, and I'd agree with that at this point. I, I liked it better in August, but it's still better than, uh, uh, it still offers savings. So, at, at this point, is there anybody that would like to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll, I'll go ahead and make the motion. I got to make sure I'm on the right item here. Uh, actually, I am on the wrong.
It's, uh, number 46?
Yeah, I shifted, uh, oh, I'm on...
And Madam Chair, if I could, Lindsey, this is a roll call vote?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, it is a roll call vote, but we still need to make the motion in a second.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah.
So, Madam Chair, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2022-23, approving the sale and execution and delivery of the pledged revenue obligations in one or more series, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of necessary agreements, instruments, and documents, delegating authority to determine certain matters with respect to the foregoing and declaring an emergency.
Members of the board, you've heard the motion. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Vice Chair seconds that motion. Members of the board, this does require a roll call vote, and so, I will ask our, um, clerk to, uh, uh, make the roll call.
Thank you, Chair Horstmann. If you can please state "aye" if you are approving, or "nay" if you don't approve. Thank you Chair Horseman. If you can please state aye if you are approving or nay if you don't approve. I'll start with District One Chair Horseman.
Aye.
District Two, Geronimo Vasquez.
Aye.
District Three Supervisor Matt Ryan.
Aye.
District Four Supervisor Judy Bagay.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And Supervisor of District Five Supervisor Fowler is absent from this vote.
Very good. A roll call vote was four, uh, zero with one um, um, member not present. So I believe that passes. And I was just asked, just because it's a fairly quick item, to try to do forty-seven before we come back to our last item of the day, which is forty-eight, which is another public hearing. So uh, let's go ahead and do number uh, forty-seven in hopes our mics will last through this. Uh, consideration of possible action. All right, already hasn't lasted. Consideration of possible action on the review of comments received during the forty-five day comment period and approval of FY twenty-three Title III projects under the Secure Rural Schools and Community Self-Determination Act and approve a budget amendment for the Forest Fee Fund of $227,512. At this time, I'm going to turn this over to Siri Mulaney, who will present on this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Um, so as stated, this is to acknowledge that we did have a forty-five day comment period as required under the Secure Rural Schools um, federal rules for expending funds under Title III. Part of that comment period included a legal posting in the newspaper, which we did um, satisfy. We also had it on our website. And we did a notification to the resource um, allocation committee, the local RAC, um, in terms of our intent to expend the Title III funds. Um, what we had, um, well, so first of all, we did not receive any comments during the comment period. Um, but the proposal that was published was our intent to expend our Title III funds towards the un, um, the unreimbursed cost of patrol on federal lands. Title III under the Secure Rural Schools Act is limited to specific purposes. Um, there, there's a, a variety, but it's, it's only a handful really of purposes. And so historically, we've used those funds, um, because our sheriff's office does put um, a lot of, of man hours that are unreimbursed into patrolling and um, ensuring safety on federal lands. And they do track those expenses and they, they always far out exceed the amount that we are able to receive any reimbursement from. Um, and so because this is an allowable expense, this has traditionally been the use of the funds. Um, also as a reminder, we did do a session on this during the fiscal year twenty-three budget hearings with the Board of Supervisors, um, where we initially proposed this. So, so moving forward with a comment period and the posting is really um, in alignment with the direction the board gave back during budget development.
So basically what this does is allows us to um, uh, expend under our secure rural schools and approve a budget amendment to the Forest Fee Fund, $227,512 to be used uh, for the patrol by sheriffs for the unbilled cost on public lands and federal lands here in Coconino County. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And if in fact, we didn't do that, what that would mean is we'd have to come out of our, of our um, a general um, uh, pledged revenue obligations instead of um, our, a general fund rather than going through secure rural schools. So in, in essence, this saves us under our um, uh, general fund and allows us an opportunity to use these Title III funds in accordance with requirements under Title III, correct?
That is correct.
All right. Any other questions or comments, members of the board? Uh, Supervisor Ryan?
Madam Chair, I'm prepared to make the motion.
Uh, please.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the use of the fiscal year twenty-three Title III funds for funding the Flagstaff Patrol on qualified federal lands.
Very good. We have a motion. We have a second.
I'll second the motion stating the amount of $227,512. And I second the motion.
Thank you very much Supervisor Bagay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. And uh, at this point, we are going to take at least a ten minute break in hopes that we're going to get these things um, charged up again for our last item. So thank you and thank you everyone for your patience. And thank you staff for your patience on, on trying to get these moving for us. Appreciate it.
Madam Chair.
Yes, County Manager.
Madam Chair, first of all, it's obvious that this evening we are experiencing some technical difficulties with our audio. The streaming video has not been interrupted. However, we feel and I think that the Board and our citizens and our applicants would agree that it is a disservice to continue. We are distracted. We're trying to get mics and changed out. And I think that we can all agree that it's just an interruption and a distraction to the business at hand. This is important work. This is important on a number of fronts. And so at this time, Madam Chair, I would like to call the applicant to the podium to ask the applicant if they would propose, if they would agree to a continuance of this case to October 11th. The evening of October 11th, we will arrange the agenda so that this is the first item on the agenda at 6:00 p.m. We do need to go through our public noticing process to make sure that we abide by that statutory requirement. So with your permission, Madam Chair, I would like to ask the applicant to come to the podium and determine if they would stipulate to our proposal.
Thank you, County Manager. Good evening.
Vice Chair and Supervisors, we would appreciate the opportunity to extend till the 11:00.
Thank you. And, you know, again, for you and the folks that are here with you, just our sincere apologies. This is obviously, we're doing our very best that we can. We are working on a hybrid system, and we just are having technical difficulties tonight. So thank you for being here. Thank you for understanding. I look forward to seeing you again on October 11th. And we will make sure that we do everything to get this technology back together again. So thank you for your patience and understanding. Really appreciate this. And have a very good night. We'll see you soon. And yes.
Madam Chair, with that, you know, I would make a motion that we continue this hearing until October 11th. As noted, I want to thank the applicant for their patience and our sincere apologies.
We have a motion to accept the applicant's willingness to continue this hearing. And do we have a second for that?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. We will continue this. We look forward to going forward on October 11th. We will do the necessary notifications as required by law, and so that we'll be ready for a full hearing at that time. Again, thank you. Thank you for your patience. Have a great night. And this meeting is adjourned.